Fifty-one Weed Street as owners for an eight thirty G set aside development of one hundred and two dwelling unit. Family development located at seven fifty-one Weed Street. Item number two, upon application Timothy Hollister Henley Allen authorized Asian for W partners development plan applicant seven fifty-one Weed Street LLC as owners first petition for change in zoning boundary for property currently located in the one acre zone. They request to change designate the property located seven fifty-one Weed Street as TOMZ transit orient multi-family zone item number three discussion and consideration the request Timothy Hollister Henley Allen authorized Asian for WB partners as development applicant and seventy-five seven fifty-one Weed Street LLC as owners for an eight thirty G set aside site plan application. For the property located at seven fifty-one Weed Street. So here's how the meeting will unfold tonight. The applicant will make a presentation. Um, will then have give the opportunity to the consultants to the commission to make some comments. And then commissioners, you know, once the applicants made their their presentation, you're welcome to answer questions as well as after the after our consultants present. We will then open it up to the public. Um, the ask of the public is to please only uh to limit your comments just to the new information that's presented tonight. Um, and then after that planning zoning commissioners, you'll have one more opportunity for questions and then we'll look for the applicant to summarize for the evening attorney Hollister.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Goodwin, Commission members, town staff, ladies and gentlemen, Attorney Tim Hollister representing the applicant. Uh, development team with me who will be presenting tonight are uh. Our professional engineer Lynn DeAndrea, our traffic consultant Kevin Sully. Blackburner landscape architect and Joe Versteg, who I think you know from the. September first package is a fire safety and response expert. Uh, so what we're going to do is we're going to present the highlights of the package. Meaning the narrative package and the site plan revisions that we filed with the town on September first. We will, I've distributed copies of the slides that we've provided to the town planner. Uh, there's nothing new here. These are just copies with a little bit of color added for illustration. Uh, but this is right, right? Straight out of the September first filing. Uh, as always, I want to say thank you to the staff for their logistical help in getting us to tonight. So just a couple of preliminary comments. The first is that the site plan revisions. That we have made are all in response to the town staff. Comments and the peer reviewers principally the town engineer Copeland, Mr. Thompson and. Uh, Mr. Kingsbury. So with main, the main uh. Items as you have seen and you will hear. The driveway has been reconfigured. Drainage has been reconfigured. There've been, there's a proposal to. Modify the external traffic and pedestrian improvements in response to the driveway revision. We've tweaked the proposed regulation to deal with the make the landscaping and the screening section. Consistent with the site planner vision, but otherwise the building layout, parking, all the major. Features essentially have not changed. Um, I would emphasize that we have responded to all of the comments, both town staff, peer reviewers, as much as the Hatfield muse. Uh, we have tried to cover, cover all the bases. Um, I'm not going to go into the uh, the, the analysis of this, but I just again point out. That we tried again in tab one, section five to explain what we believe the obligations are of the commission. With regard to reasonable changes, uh, if after tonight there are remaining concerns. And in addition, now that we're potentially near the end of the hearing. A reminder, and you may, may ask attorney Geldman for additional guidance on this. But if there is a site plan concern that can be addressed with a condition of approval. In an eight thirty G application, the commission is required to impose the condition rather than. Uh, make it a denial reason. So for example, you could approve the site plan conditional on the addition of. Stop signs and stop bars on weed and Elm as proposed by the site plan. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. DeAndrea.
Good evening, Leonard DeAndrea, Connecticut professional engineer. And our firm has provided the Mancivee and engineering services for the app. Uh, I'll go through an overview of some of the changes. Uh, Lynn, is this slide number two? Make sure the utility. Uh, the next one, I believe. There you go. Great. Okay, um, with this slide. Look, Mr. DeAndrea, I mean, ideally. We want everybody to see what you're talking to, but are you able to proceed?
Okay. Um, the first and most obvious as you, as you look at package. And I'll be looking at it may be helpful to you is utility plan, which is sheet two of seven. And that shows some of these components highlighted. And the first thing that I think is the most obvious is that there is now um. A curb opening. I'll, I'll start with that on Weed Street where there wasn't one before. And that's now going to be the exit point. So we're going to have a. Essentially a one-way circulation coming in from Elm Street and then going in a counterclockwise direction. Uh, you could exit out to weed. Now that's the in and out circulation. When you get to that northerly handle of parking. That's a two-way operation and then getting into the garage would be a two-way operation. But what we wanted to do to make sure we didn't. Uh, adversely impact Elm Street intersection is to then make that one way. So now we just turn in. From Elm, we, we go into our garage or we go into our parking and when we exit, we'll exit out to Weed Street. And Weed Street, as you may have driven it, I'm sure many times, that's a very straight section of the roadway and it has some uh excellent um. Uh, like vehicle sightlines. Um, we think that this is great too, because it allows us to have a wider opening both. On the entrance and the exit. So now some of our larger emergency vehicles will be able to negotiate that much easier. And of course, our delivery trucks as well. Uh, we received comments from DPW and we responded to all of them. Uh, we did change some of the things, some of our model results and or the way we did model the watershed areas. And then we also added a few things. For instance, now on the south side. We had some gravel um reservoirs underneath the driveway. And that perhaps wasn't providing enough polishing of our stormwater. So on the south side, before it heads out to its discharge from the site, we've added a sand filter. That just is another technique to help polish the stormwater itself. Because of the new change in the driveway, uh, we also expanded the infiltration system. Which is kind of a, we haven't, kind of like a double um. A single row broken apart and that was expanded to accommodate the additional impervious surface going out to the westerly Weed Street. Um, there is also a request to do percolation tests, not here and there, but. Uh, where these systems are being proposed. So we went out and we did nine soil percolation tests where we tested the soil for. velocity to see how long it would take to draw down and we got very favorable results. Uh, there's nine in total. Um, and altogether. This proves or demonstrates that our fourteen different drainage management components will operate as we expect them to operate by design. We also then took those rates and we made sure we applied it conservatively to our model. Another thing we did apart for uh. Development access and also for, for, for snow maintenance is we changed our typical curving that you know that has a reveal. And we changed that to what's called a mountable curb, or some people know it as Cape Cod, where it's basically you take that section, you flatten it out. And that's great for snow plowing, uh, allows us to blade easier. You don't break it up. You don't, you don't run into that, that obstacle. It also helps for those larger vehicles when they're coming through the site to, to negotiate the turns. Another thing that we added um to help that accessibility is a sidewalk along the Elm Street frontage. To continue that link across the property front is on Elm Street. Uh, we also then designated the snow areas, snow storage areas. That was a concern. Uh, we have a fairly large area on the north side of the building. That will be designated for snow storage if, if necessary. And of course, we have the rain garden and then the corners uh in the northerly part of the property. That with the mountable curb makes it easier for, for the snow management and. If we have such a storm that that is more than usual, then it can also be trucked. Uh, we responded to comments submitted by Trinkus Engineering well. And through all this, there was a change in the total parking count, which dropped down to a hundred and seventy-eight spaces from, I believe it was uh one eighty-six. Uh, another thing that we did for accessibility by emergency vehicles firefighters. Is we added three additional gaps in the, in the street wall, mainly on. The westerly side weed and then one more on Elm. And that brings, when you count everything, which is the two driveway points of the uh, the access to the crosswalk. Uh, and these new gaps will have a total of six points where they can come through the wall without having to, to um. Go up, up and over the walls to just come through these access points. There was a question about a school bus stop. And my career this, you know, question has never really come up before. Um, so the applicant looked into that. And typically the way the Board of Education approaches that is they will assign a pickup spot. You know, be, be based on demand and bus routing and it'll be something that they review on a regular basis. And I, I, again, I just, it's one of those where if the children are there, they need to be bused. They will find the appropriate place to stop either on Elm or weed or within the site, and that's how that would be managed. So in conclusion is our professional opinion that we have put forth a very comprehensive stormwater. Management plan and site design plan that will encourage infiltration. Create stormwater and control the peak rates of runoff and volume such that the development will not have an adverse impact on local drainage patterns. Or adjacent property owners and that the site design can be constructed and operated with no health or safety concerns. That's the overview of the modifications and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Messers, any questions?
I have a question. Um, we look at sheet two. Um, you've mentioned this sidewalk that is leading from the crosswalk. Uh, as being ADA compliant?
No, it is not. The uh, right now, uh. Everything within the complex itself is ADA uh compliant. We have provided uh coming out on the side. Out to that terrace, some steps down to a sidewalk that goes along the westerly side, south to the crosswalk where there are a few more steps down as well.
So you're the um. Project is not accessible by a wheelchair in that location. Um, you should review the ADA. You're, you're required to have access at that point.
Not sure if I want to uh comment fully on that because I don't want to get it incorrect, but uh. From very personal experience, I, I tend to disagree with what you've said. As you think about it, let's take Elm Street itself. Let's just say we got to um that point in the crosswalk. There are very, very, very few streets anywhere that are ADA compliant. What, what you would like to do is remove obstacles and for this development, what you would do is you would come into the development. Perhaps with a vehicle and then within that itself, there are designated parking spaces and it's all fully ADA compatible.
Yeah, I don't want to argue with you, but um, this is new construction, so therefore it has to. Comply to ADA and you can't compare it to existing construction. The second part is that if I'm in a wheelchair, how do I go into the facility from that crosswalk?
How I would do it is if I was an individual on my own, I would probably not. Approach it in that respect. I would, I would have someone bring me into the complex itself.
So if someone, if someone in a wheelchair wanted to take a walk at Irwin Park, they have no way to get back into the building or out of the building?
Although they, they can do that. What you're asking is can we get from this building to that intersection? There are other ways to get out there. Uh, but you're asking is to have a completely compatible ADA uh access from here to that park, and I don't think that exists.
So what you're, John Chris, so what you're saying, sir, if I understand you correctly, is that you can leave the building, but you can't leave the complex. Unless you're in a vehicle and in a wheelchair.
I, I would say that you could leave the building, but I would not say that's the route you should take because you can get out to Elm Street. You could get out to the sidewalk because you could come out of their building uh along the driveway and we have a ramp in Elm Street. But once you get to the intersection, that doesn't mean you can get elsewhere in town. It's just, your town is just not fully compatible. So if you were in a wheelchair here, you could easily get out uh from the garage itself. You could come down the driveway, turn onto the sidewalk, which has a ramp on Elm Street, get down to the intersection. And then you're on your own because your town is not fully ADA compatible. Compliant. And, and that's the honest truth. I wish it was better, but it's simply not. So you're, once you get here. That's it. That's the end of it. But you can get to this intersection from with a wheelchair.
You, yes, you can. However, you're restricting. That path of travel.
No, no.
Through, through the garage.
Well, sure.
And not through the front door where.
Well, we have.
An able-bodied person can use that front door. Isn't that discriminatory?
Not, not at all, because we have the designated parking spaces in the garage and we, and we have the elevator.
What, what if I'm not in a car?
What if you live in the complex, you're handicapped in a wheelchair? Again, you want to take a stroll or a roll.
Sure.
Over to Irwin Park.
Sure.
And I'm not trying to be funny. I'm just.
I understand.
At this point, you have no way to get out of the building and over to the new intersection, your, the new crosswalk that you're building. To be able to get over to the existing crosswalk, which is currently ADA compliant. To get across Weed Street to get to Irwin.
Well, first I'd be careful when you say it is ADA compliant because you have, you can't, you don't know what those crossslips are. So when you say it's fully.
Oh, I do. I live on Weed Street about.
So you've taken your measures. I don't like entering an argument here, but be careful what you say when you say those things. So I'm telling you. To answer your question, and this is from personal experience, trust me. You can get out of this building and I can get you to that intersection in a wheelchair, hand-driven. What do I do then?
How?
When you, because you can come out of the garage and you go down your driveway and you turn onto the sidewalk and you get to the intersection. Now you tell me in the town of New Canaan, where do we go from there? So we've gotten you to the intersection. Now it's your job to take us to Irwin Park.
Okay, you, you really. I don't think it's a valid argument about the town's sidewalks and ADA. This is new construction and your property, your project has to conform to ADA. And that by not having that front entry off of weed. Able for someone in a wheelchair is discriminatory.
You're calling that the front entry and that's not the front entry.
I'm, I'm calling it an entry.
Well, you call it the front entry. It's not just one of many.
But I, if I'm in a wheelchair, you're, you're forcing me to go around the building into a.
But we all know that all buildings have multiple points of entrance and exit. They are not all ADA compliant. They are not. We have two places here. The front door, which is on the east side and also the garage. We have a ramp coming out the front door and we also have the garage. So again, I can get you to the intersection. That's as far as we can get you.
And ADA is civil law, which means.
I understand it far better than you think.
It's not, it's not, it's not.
I go all over. I've been to Australia with these situations. Trust me when I tell you.
All right, let's keep going, please, Mr. DeAndrea.
I have a question about the driveway. Um, so if I'm looking at the plans correctly. I actually didn't compare to the previous version, so I'm not sure if you widen the entrance from Elm Street. But what it does appears that once you enter the site, the driveway narrows to about twenty feet. Wide and then opens up again and gets wider back to like twenty-four or so feet. And I guess I'm wondering why you did that? Why wouldn't you just keep the driveway twenty-four feet the whole way?
Um, it's not necessary to keep it that wide when we don't have parking to worry about. We want to make it wider at the intersection because the, the shoulder. On Elm is not as wide as most. Oftentimes that shoulder is ten to fifteen feet. We don't have that. So we're making it wider so we can turn in without leaving our lane and same thing on the exit point too, just easily turn in, turn out.
Okay, so once you turn in from Elm, even if you're like a fire truck or UPS truck, you can stay in your lane despite the twenty-foot width there. Um, I also have a question about, I don't know if this is for you. Tell me if it's not about the trash location.
Uh, we've designated it, yes, you can.
Is it over here, kind of like to the left of the building?
It would be uh. Let's see, if you look at the north arrow, so you'd say off the northeast corner of the building is a trash enclosure.
Right. It looks like two little doors opening into an area. Okay. So how does a garbage truck access that?
They would pull in from, from Elm. They would roll out the bins, load them and then continue the circulation counterclockwise out to weed.
Okay, so would it be mechanical loading or? Like, would, would the truck pick them up, you know, and dump them the way some of them do?
Well, I, I, I would think so. That's the way I, we expected. They would come in, lift and stuff.
Okay.
And click back and then drive out.
But it'd have to be done from the side then, not from the front, because some do from the front.
You would have to reel it out, right? Reel it out into position and then lift it over, then wheel it back to the enclosure.
Why wouldn't you modify the dumpster enclosure design to allow for direct front access? In this, in the area where it is.
Um. Well, it, in this plan that we have before you, that couldn't be done. So it's very typical that they're on wheels. It's not uncommon to open them up, roll them out. Lift and then put back.
In the winter?
Winter, summer, spring or fall.
I have a question, sir. Um, if I heard you correctly, the north end is where um. You plan to have a rain garden?
Yes.
And also uh, snow will be stored there. If there's a large volume, is that correct, sir?
That's not the first place. The, the main place, we had a large volume of snow that we did not want to haul upsite. That would be just on the north side of the building. So when they're, it, listening to your concerns, we did not want to force into the corners in the north end. We prefer not to necessarily put it into the rain gardens. That's where it's going to melt and go anyway. So the storage area is a nice size storage area on the north side, but. Like in any other situation, if it's a, a multiple storm event, I'd say. And the snow is too much, it will be hauling away.
So if I, I look at your picture correctly, that northern end, that's sort of a horseshoe shape. Um, uh, is where you would essentially cannibalize the roadway a bit and put the snow there?
No, 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 that, that's, that's just a secondary corner. If we had to store the snow, we'd be immediately on the north side of the building. So in between the rain garden, actually in between the parking lot on the north side of the building and the building itself is a large area that. Would be used for a snowstorm if necessary.
That's the sort of curled bit below a, I'm trying to read the rest of it. It's a sprint is pretty small. It is.
For that one, no one else can see it but you. It's, again, it's that space that's uh immediately on the north side of the northeast corner of the building.
It's, is it where the transformers in the middle of that?
No, the transformer is west of that. So to your point, then there's a transformer, a sidewalk, a large unoccupied area and then the trash enclosure.
So the, the planned sort of first choice on snow is going to be just east of the transformer, that sort of square?
If we had to actually accumulate it there, if you had to pick it and store it there, that would be the preferred location.
It wouldn't be the, the far north butt end.
No, I, I, you know, as, as normal, you come in and blade it, you're going to get snow pushed into that corner as you come around as the other corner. But, you know, again, to your point, we didn't want to make that the primary. We'd prefer not to just. Have them throw and push everything into a rain garden, although that could be used that way. If you had such that you really need to store snow for a bit, it would go there, but a um. A development like this, it's going to have management and that contract will say. If it's not, if it's so much that it has to be accumulated or stored. We don't want to exceed that location. You have to haul it away.
And the rain garden is this sort of very pointy elongated triangle. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, well, you're pointing, yes, that's great.
And it's on the north end.
North end, yes.
Right. And so I'm looking at that, trying to figure out access since it's sort of surrounded by parking, I assume probably cars are going to be there. Uh, and it's really only seen to be accessible through the uh far, I want to make sure, south end. But given how long it is, I'm wondering how you access the center and so forth, and especially since it gets skinnier and skinnier as you go, go north, yeah.
Well.
How you, how you get the snow in there in the first place?
You made a very interesting point, right? Uh, you come out and your car is full of snow. What would you do? You'd brush the half off towards the rain garden. You brush, brush the other half behind you and you'd drive away.
Well, some people do that, but some people don't, but we'll let that go.
Some people drive away with the snow in the car, but my point is when those vehicles are gone, this is not, this is a situation. Where they have a management that within come in and clean up, they'll be doing the sidewalks, they'll be doing hand shoveling. It's just not a snowplow. So it's all part of management. You know, just like you say about landscaping, uh, it's not the homeowner trying to do in the weekend. It is controlled and usually by a lawn maintenance company. Uh, both for treatments and for manicuring.
Yeah, yeah. Also, just to be sure I'm reading the, the drawing correctly, the entrance on, on Elm. The the entrance on on Elm and it um, the essentially the main driveway uh, would hug various um. Uh, neighbors to the uh, to the east, so hugs the the border, the property line pretty closely. And does that horseshoe around the north, which would hug a neck, be right by another neighbor. And then it would be heading. Southwest, I think, maybe uh, south southwest. And then before it heads um, uh, west or mostly west and then it'd hug again another property line by a another neighbor. When it comes to screening, I have to admit, I was unable to read your chart on two point six one.
So I'll.
It is not readable.
For that to someone else.
Okay, but I could not read it. Okay, so I guess I'm talking to someone else. Thank you. Those were my questions.
What also, what's the percentage impervious coverage for this latest iteration? What's that plan?
I I don't have it handy in front of me. I can look it up um, uh, before we conclude.
Do you have a rough estimate? Has it changed since the beginning?
Uh, yes, the impervious cover coverage has increased because we have the exit point. I can tell you that.
Um, is there a loading zone somewhere that I missed? Or, you know, deliveries, UPS, FedEx, Uber Eats?
If if situations like this, you would typically uh, come into the the easterly courtyard area. And again, I I think as a, as this building is managed. It may be directed that it's exactly in this location, but there's a a loop, as you know, on the east side of the building, that courtyard, you can come in and do it. Again, like a counterclockwise or a clockwise circulation for any drop offs or deliveries.
And will those parking areas there be, will those parking areas be signed that they're for, you know, short term?
It it certainly could be. I think that's part of management, but if you think about that, I we made sure that there's room. It's it's too wide. So it's not one way narrow. And so if there was a delivery truck stage for a quick delivery inside the lobby. That's all it would be. But then it's in and out and you still have passage.
I make Commissioner Best, the building coverage is twenty six percent and the total impervious coverage is sixty five percent.
Thank you.
So if a um, delivery truck were to stop in that courtyard in front of the building to run in a package or whatever. And at the same time, a fire alarm was pulled, would a fire truck be able to also pull into that courtyard?
I would say it this way, if a delivery truck is there, so is the driver. If an emergency is coming, that driver will move the truck if necessary.
What if the problem is the driver on the truck, it's catching fire and it's engulfing the building?
There there are certain questions that sometimes I'm not sure if they're worth answering. You know, you're you're bringing up hypotheticals that. In any given situation, there could be a crisis. In this case, it's well managed because there's tremendous circulation around this building now.
Well, I I hear you on hypotheticals, but we have to worry about that because of all the things we do, public health and safety in in my mind.
Yeah.
Is the most important.
The easiest way to answer your question is that far a truck would push it out of the way, or if they have keys ready, it would move, will do that. You can ask any firefighter. They will get to where they have to get. You answer your question simply. Now you're saying that this delivery guy just passed out and died. And now there's a fire. I mean, all these things, at some point you say, okay, let's be realistic. If there's a delivery truck and there is a driver and there happened to be a fire truck pulling in and he says, you get that truck out of the way. I think you're going to move the truck pretty quick.
I would concur, sir, but um, the issue is that the problem is the truck, you know, maybe a package catches on fire.
And the firefighter is going to fight the truck.
Well, you're trying to get into the this garth.
Yes, I have to use. And they have two ways to get in there. Remember now, this this is not one way dead end. This is a loop. If that fire truck, oh, excuse me, if that delivery truck is in front of the building, you can get there two different ways now. You can pass it and you can come from two different directions. So.
Uh, it's just. I worry perhaps that may be difficult if you have a um, delivery of vehicle that becomes engulfed. And is now including or also threatening the building itself and you can't loop through.
Let's look at it a different way. We could have done this with one way in. It could have been a drive quick. Now that's a different story. Now now you have a better, perhaps, argument. You only have one way in. Well, in this, we have a loop. We can come in from two different directions. This is much better than a lot of the courtyards you see around now.
Well, if the building were not a horseshoe shaped, you know, you would have better access to all the sides, wouldn't you?
No. If you think about now, we we have these three sides are accessible from two different directions. The accessibility around this is complete. You can get around at three sixty. You can come through the walls at different locations. This this site is so accessible now and just because of your comments. We've taken those comments and we've addressed them. This is, this is a very good design.
Hmm. Thank you, sir.
To your point of. Two points of entering the site, especially for emergency vehicles, you've run some figure studies and you're on the turning radiuses for the equipment. That you can fire uses two different types of trucks. The delivery trucks are obviously smaller. Have you run those um. Those flow uh, paths for the vehicles in the opposite direction entering off of Weed Street?
Oh, I have not, but that's a question for our traffic.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Lynn, you want to go to the last slide if you can?
You go to slide thirteen? Don't have the color.
That's it is the color.
Then I can bring in, if you do go to slide seven, please, the landscape sign. Sorry, I thought we had a colored. Plan, but I can use this.
Slide what? Sorry?
Slide seven. The two point six two.
Point six two, okay, that I got. Thank you.
Sorry, two point six one.
Sorry, two point six one. That's the one I couldn't read as the printing was off. Thank you. It's not readable. Photocopy was. Check the. Redman's, it's the same. I think it's true for all the photocopies.
Yeah. But they don't have.
It was behind the renderings.
It is not readable.
It could be when it when they shrunk it for the packets. Did you receive the large slide, the large?
I have this, this is the one you're referring to that was handed to me today. That's what I'm looking at. I'm looking, I'm using my magnifier on my phone and uh. Not helping. So, thank you.
Well, it might have been when they shrunk it from the plans that were submitted, but I can answer questions after I go through what we.
Beyond my scope of expertise then.
Okay. Um, so for the record, my name is Mary Blackburn. I'm a professional landscape architect in the state of Connecticut with solely engineering offices. Um, at Bev One Main Street in Monroe. Uh, so I'm going to walk you through the landscape and the lighting plans and go through um, some of the changes, the minor changes that were made in. In the um, response to comments from the planner's letter and also comments that we heard uh, from the commission. I can just present to slide seven, Lynn, if you don't have the colored plan. Yes.
Oh, she stuck everything in the original folder.
Yeah, here it is.
So the the few changes that were made to the landscape plan were um, in response to the entry drive off of Elm Street. So that shifted when it became an entrance only and um, the dogwood tree that was adjacent on the. East side formerly formerly got um, moved to the west side of the entry drive. And similarly, the foundation plantings that were kind of at the southeast corner of the building there, adjacent to the driveway. Uh, we're just um, kind of shifted and rearranged to respond to the new drive location. On the east side of that entry drive, we previously had um, a mix of juniper and. Ornamental grasses for a buffer and we swapped out part of that buffer to be completely junipers, just to provide some better. Screening along the first part of the buffer on the east side. On the, I'll kind of skip over now because there weren't many changes, but on the west, like the northwest property. Border, there's a buffer there that was winter berry shrubs and we've um, changed that to be a mixture of. Eastern red cedar, which will provide um, a taller buffer, fifteen to twenty feet. And we've mixed those with mountain laurel and also um, some inkberry and some ornamental grasses. The last change that we've made is on the north property border. Uh, where the new exit drive is kind of to the left of that. Uh, we did have some arborvitae and we've replaced that with the eastern red cedar again, which gets fifteen to twenty feet tall. And some mountain laurel. If you can skip ahead two slides of the lighting plan. So on the lighting plan, again, we had minor changes. Um, we added a twelve foot. Pole fixture at the um, new location of the exit drive. And then um, kind of where the parking is on the north side of the building. Kind of next to where the snow storage areas and the lawn that you were discussing, we used to have one pole centrally located on those parking spaces. And um, to get better coverage of the exit drive, we've added one either side rather than one centrally. On those spaces. And we've also added two wall packs on the building, kind of adjacent to that drive. And that sums up the changes for the landscape and the lighting. We also um, revised a shade study that we had created to. Um, include the month of January and um, that additional month showed no impact. With that, I can take any questions may have.
Questions, commissioners.
So did I hear you, I'm sorry, did I hear you correctly that you just said the lighting at the new exit? Maybe elsewhere on the sites, twelve feet tall?
Um, so as as previously submitted, there are two fixtures that are twelve feet. Those are the ones closest um. To the roadway at the entry drives. Um, the other fixtures are sixteen feet.
Okay, so what, do you have pictures of what these poles look like?
Yes, on sheet two point seven one in the bottom left, there's a detail. And in our previous presentation, we had photos of the light fixtures. Those have not changed. We're still proposing the same fixtures.
And is there a reason they have to be so tall?
Um, twelve is actually fairly short for parking lot lighting. It's residential and pedestrian scale, usually. Eight to twelve feet is pedestrian scale and um, parking lots can go anywhere from sixteen to twenty, twenty two feet.
Well.
But the the shorter they are, we um, put in, there need to be more fixtures to get even.
Yeah, I mean, it would, it would just seem logical that um, to avoid having. The light being seen by the neighbors that you would have lower fixtures and more of them.
Actually, they're they're dark sky compliant and full cutoffs. Uh, so there, that prevents light spill. Onto the neighboring properties and with the existing proposed buffers. You know, three zero foot candles at the property lines.
What about people who live on off of Weed Street that are lower in elevation? Maybe cut off fixtures, but they're going to see those, the light source.
The light source isn't visible. Um, it's recessed in the the top of the fixture. That's what a full cutoff. Dark sky compliant fixture.
So is is the light shining down or is it reflecting?
It's shining down, but the bulb is not visible. It's recessed into the fixture. And there's no light emitted above um, ninety is full cutoff. It may even be less ninety degrees. It may be less on this fixture.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Um, I.
For the.
Go ahead.
Um, for the the landscape buffer, you even mentioned um, eastern cedars, is that right?
Yes.
You said, um, what's the height of the building?
Um.
It's forty nine and a half feet.
Yeah.
So what's the, what's the top of the, what's the highest that plant will get?
That plant average is about fifteen to twenty feet tall.
So what percentage of that?
Uh, it would depend actually on how far you were from the building and the angle. Um, you know, you. Have to do it either from, if you're in a car at a three foot height, or if you're standing at a six foot height.
Reach that off the ground.
Yeah, or if you're standing at six, six feet, which a buck, again, it depends how far you are and angle, the view angle. That you get.
And so how far apart are these trees?
They are three to four feet because this is a variety um, that only grows three to four feet wide.
And those are circling the entire site?
No, there's a mix. Um, so we've used those in areas where there's not existing vegetation. That's already providing a buffer screening and then it's mixed also with other evergreen shrubs and grasses, just so it's not like a. Evergreen kind of fortress and um, to actually add some variety for that.
So the the trees are going to be three feet apart, but fifteen feet to twenty feet high. How tall will they be when they're planted?
Um, I believe five to seven was what we specified.
So they're a slow growing plant based on my research here. So they grow roughly a foot a year. So.
That's average about a foot a year for a a tree.
Planted at five feet and they grow a foot a year. It would take them fifteen years to get to their twenty foot height?
Yeah, ten to fifteen. Again, five to seven is what we're specifying.
But unless you're really sure, it would work out. Those two trees, okay. So it just doesn't seem like that effective a buffering effort. Or is it possible to buy bigger trees, bigger than five feet?
Oh, yeah, that, you know, the largest probably in a nursery trade is probably eight to ten feet.
And why the choice to plant trees that are going to be there in seven years?
Um, so, I mean, most trees you plant, you know, you can't buy twenty year old trees at a nursery. It's not a. Something that's available usually, so we, we plant them at the size that's typically available and. Um, allow them to grow in and mature over time.
So why not get bigger trees like a?
We could do an eight, eight to ten is generally the largest size.
Get to thirty feet or so, why not get, why not plant a. A dawn redwood that would easily get higher or.
Not native, but um, also, you know, we're working with a limited um. Kind of width, so. You know, some evergreen trees are going to grow forty feet wide at maturity. Um, so these, again, are a specific variety that grow very narrow and also provide the height. But they grow about fifteen to twenty feet tall.
Because you're working with a a four foot buffer, it looks like, between the parking lot and the border?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So to Chris's point, it seems to me that you've sacrificed a landscape buffer for circulation and parking. So to Chris's point, it seems to me that you've sacrificed a landscape buffer for circulation and parking.
Scale of building.
For scale of building.
I wouldn't say sacrifice. I'd say there's a compromise in other areas. We have a more robust buffer and then there's also existing buffers on surrounding properties.
Where is the, where are the other areas with more robust buffer? Because appears on the only half of the property line to the east adjacent adjoining the two and a half properties on that side have the junipers, those five to seven footers. And then you have the same plants, the same plantings along the north and northwest property, but it's the same density. It's, you know, or seven junipers and then some grasses in between and then more junipers and some grasses in between. So where's the denser?
So these were designed, not looking at the site, you know, alone, kind of with tunnel vision, there is existing planting on both seven eighty-one weed, three seventeen elm, eight oh nine weed, and we wouldn't want to plant something that's actually going to grow and not have the room to mature with the existing plants that are on those sites and the canopies that are existing. There is an existing evergreen buffer, both on our property and the neighbor's property on the east side.
Then so when you say you're introducing a denser buffer, you're really not. What you're doing is leveraging the existence of existing buffer on other neighboring properties to include in your calculation that you've got a dense buffer.
We're looking at existing conditions and considering that in our design because that's what you do when you're planting directly next to another property that has trees on it.
So madam, if I understand you correctly, you're going to require the neighbors to maintain their screening?
No, we're not requiring them to maintain their screening. It's their property and they can do as they wish on their property.
So if they wish to be screened from this particular development and sit on their back porch and have a Cabernet Sauvignon and not look at a parking lot, they're going to have to plant some trees.
No, if they're sitting on their porch, this will be sufficiently screened with the buffer that we're providing on our property and with the buffer that they have existing on their property.
Yeah, I'm looking at one of the, one of the borders. This is the one that's the long one that goes make it the south southwest towards the egress of the property. And then it makes that right turn out. So if I read it correctly, you have IG, MC, and IV, those four plants. So IV, so MC, which is pink mully grass. I don't think that's, is that native?
Yes.
But grass, I mean, I have grass. It's not that big.
It depends on the variety. These go four to six feet long.
The grass. Uh, what else do we have? We have IG. Let me find that one here. Or is it?
IG. Oh, these are so right against.
That's inkberry. I've been very on my property and they are not that thick.
They're an evergreen that go.
I'm aware of there are never five. They're not that thick. I mean, I have some by my deck and I mean, I like them, but you know, screening, they are not providing. Let me see this IG, this MC, the other one. Sorry, let me get this one right. MC, where? What is that? MC, IV, and oh, IG, sorry. Ilex, that's in very sorry, M, IV, sorry. IV, which is where?
Winter berry.
Winter berry, which is also about the same height. Do you have mountain laurel, which is a state bush? That's nice, but I'm looking at the trees. Ginkgo, thuj, ginkgo is a Chinese tree, by the way. I'm sure you know.
Yeah, we've provided eighty-two percent natives on this plan.
Except for the big trees, they're all Japanese, Swartia, that's well, that's pretty self-explanatory. Hybrid dogwood is not an eastern dogwood. Fringe tree, that's not. Arbor viti or the green giant is another hybrid, but I just get a sense that along the borders, which are really hugging those those neighbors tightly, you have these kind of skinny, not particularly effective bushes to protect it and not much, especially with plows and snow. I don't know. I got bushes on the side of my driveway and they take a lot of damage in the snow. So I'm just doesn't seem very robust as far as providing screening for the neighbors. And as as Commissioner Rabbin mentioned, it seems to be a I'll use his term, I think, if he uses it correctly, sir, you know, sacrificing density and robustness of screening because you ain't got no space. My take on it.
I mean, we're providing a fifteen to twenty foot immaturity buffer and a solid evergreen.
Where's that?
Yeah, where?
Yeah, where's them?
So where we have the blue arrow juniper on the eastern side of the property. Where the building is the closest to the property line. We have forty of the blue arrow juniper. And then it continues, but we've mixed in some grasses for variety where the building is a little bit further from the property line.
The part of you referencing to this in our packet here, it shows the the building there and then there are these, these trees here.
Yes, modeled at.
So they reach about the height of the garage, right?
That's how they'd be installed.
Well, the garage is ten feet above and you said they've been installed sixty. So.
Yeah, five to seven.
Seven, okay. So plus or minus the head of the garage. So if you're standing next to them and you're sixty, you can see the second floor. So how much? So but if you wait ten years, you can send ten feet back and see the third floor.
Yeah, they continue to mature as most landscapes do.
But ever getting coverage over the second floor.
No, and I don't, I don't think the other existing houses have screening for their neighbors for their second floors.
You actually, it's funny because you actually have a tree in here that clearly actually does provide screening.
Yes, that's an existing tree that would provide screening. So in some areas.
Don't have screening. So if they actually do have screening, so this is.
I'm just saying in general, in general, in the town, not every property is completely walled off from their neighbors and you have no visibility of your neighboring buildings.
I know, but not all properties are fifty feet high, twenty feet from the lot line.
Right. Depends on the zone and the lot size.
Correct.
This is a lot of building.
Right. And in other zones where we have multifamily housing in town, which granted, I understand this is an E thirty G project, but generally we have a ten to fifteen foot minimum landscape barrier. So four feet is really subpar. And this is bigger than pretty much else in town. So I guess the question becomes, how do you adequately screen a building of this magnitude with a four-foot landscape buffer? That also includes driveways. Pretty hard to do.
A.
Are these your renderings?
No.
They're not. Okay. What about the aerial shot that's in the package?
I believe that's just a, an aerial photo of existing conditions.
So in looking at this aerial photo and comparing it to a, a Google Earth for you and the site plan and your planting plan and everything, all the information that we currently have in front of us. This is a view taken from the southeast corner, looking back at the existing house. And effectively, all of the trees in this view up to Weed Street, which is the small portion of a house with a chimney that's in the far distance. All of these trees are coming down in order to develop your site.
That is not correct.
I beg to differ, but yeah. It is because you can see that in Google Earth and comparing that to your site plan and all of the, there is going to be very, very little existing trees to remain that might be on the adjacent neighbors' properties. So you're, you're effectively dissolving and eliminating the natural barrier that's there now and replacing it with five to seven foot evergreens.
No, most of those trees are on the neighboring property and would be maintained.
Okay, I'm, I'm confused. Could you, when you said that you've got a a buffer and that you're relying on that line of trees on the neighbor's property. Those are deciduous trees, right? So they're.
It depends what property you're talking about.
I'm talking about to the, to the east.
Those are evergreen. Uh, from where the building starts going north adjacent to the parking. They're on our property and the neighbor's property and they are evergreen. It's a mature evergreen.
Okay.
Tree.
Yes, but that brings up the, the issue that, you know, if you don't like looking at our building, plant some trees and relying on neighbors to provide their own screening. I don't know.
Or simply incorporating the screening that's existing.
Well, what if the screening doesn't exist? Okay, what's the plan that you do? I'm asking you, why don't you hypothetical me? Humor me, please. You don't want to humor me?
But what was the question?
Assuming there was no, uh, plantings on neighboring properties, what would you do?
They may plant additional, but there are.
Now, what would you do? Not what you would want them to do.
We've provided buffers on all.
So you have a buffer. Would you change the buffer from what it is now, ma'am?
No, I mean, we have areas where there aren't as, aren't existing evergreens that I've provided buffers for. And in those cases, we provide buffers that are evergreen and will get twelve to fifteen to twenty feet tall.
Well, this narrow DMZ just seems pretty skinny. It's like you were allocated something this wide, you know, find something that fits. That's what I'm, I'm getting the sense of, ma'am. If I'm wrong, correct me.
I think it's a sufficient buffer with the taking into existing condition on neighboring sites, which are in the trees are in close proximity to our site.
Madam, were you consulted regarding the size of the buffers or were they given to you and saying, here's the cards that are being dealt? Find some.
They have changed since the previous, actually, they remain the same, but some of the site layout has changed. That now provides additional buffer.
That wasn't my question.
Was I asked what buffer I would?
No, for example, where did you? Let me repeat it then. Were you consulted regarding the, the buffer size and saying what buffer may be appropriate versus here's the amount of space we're giving you, find plants that will fit in this allocated footprint?
Um, I believe the regulations were written and then we worked back and forth to see what we could plant and if we could provide a buffer with what was written.
Thank you.
What's the regulations, though, for this zone come from the applicant? So you designed, you designed the regulations and then figured out whether your buffer fitted to the regulations that the applicant designed, not the tech.
I designed the planting plan for this project.
Okay, I just want to be, I just want to be clear on where the regulations are actually coming from, from the applicant.
I did not draft the regulations.
Right. It's not from us.
What would you require for a spruce or a bigger tree, like a, looks like blue spruce or something like that, you know, something that gets the thirty, forty feet? What, what buffer would be required for now?
So yeah, spruce tree at maturity would be forty, probably forty feet wide.
So you would need a forty foot wide buffer?
That would be after about fifty years of growth, so.
What would you need for the first twenty years?
Um, again, spruce trees come probably about eight to ten feet tall, like a Christmas tree size that you'd see at a nursery and those would probably be those would probably be six to eight feet wide at planting.
Are you retraining? Are you, are there any trees that are going to remain after from the current site?
Yes, we have a tree plan which is slide eight, I believe. And there are mature deciduous trees along Weed Street that will be remaining. And then there there's existing evergreens, kind of straddling the property line to the east and there's a, an evergreen tree on the property to the west in the northwest corner.
Which slide are you looking at?
Slide eight. The two point six two.
Two six two. Yeah, hi. A little bit confused, ma'am. Maybe it helped me out. I'm looking at this picture that the applicant provided. Hold us to see if you can see it.
Yes.
This appears to be the corner of weed now. Am I reading that correctly, ma'am? Okay, you said there would be some large trees on weed?
Yes.
They're not here. I don't see them. Help me out.
I believe there's two along Weed Street that are being maintained.
Okay.
Right away.
Well, there's one.
They may not have been.
Up there in the picture, that's probably across the street.
Yeah.
So it's not yours.
Right.
So, so where are they here? Because I just see some low lying bushes and a wall that does not look anything like the current wall.
Yeah, so maybe just a, a function of the rendering. I don't believe the existing trees are on the rendering there.
Oh, so it's not an accurate rendering here?
I mean, it's showing the building and the proposed planting.
And not the trees, you said, they're going to be there.
Right, which will provide additional screening. I don't believe are shown there.
So the trees you plan to leave on Weed Street are not shown in this rendering? Is that correct?
No, doesn't look like.
So, okay, so they're not there. Okay, thank you. I was confused a little bit. Want to be sure. Right, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. I'm also with the designation of a professional traffic operations engineer. You're going to talk about our updated traffic study. And, and some of the other truck turning figures and site improvements that we've made, you know, every application, whether it's warmly received by a community or sometimes faced with some adversity. I always like to say that our projects get better through the process. And I think this is a great example, as I believe that the, the modified site plan before you was a, is an improvement upon the initial submission that was first made for this project. We've been able to make some considerable improvements from a traffic standpoint, I believe, as, as the commission may recall at the last at our initial public hearing where I provided a comprehensive review of our traffic study. The traffic generation from a development such as this is not a considerable amount of traffic. It does not represent a substantive amount of traffic that would cause an adverse impact to operating conditions. That being said, there were some concerns regarding our access and egress from the site, which was previously proposed through a single entrance on Elm Street. We heard throughout the public hearing and, and testimony provided by us, the commission, peer reviewers, et cetera. There was a lot of concern about circulation around the building, access, egress, potential impacts, things like that. And I think that the plan before you today is much improved. As has been reviewed through by our civil engineer regarding the site access, the site's been improved as we are now proposing a entrance only on Elm Street and an egress on Weed Street. And what this does is it helps us to better distribute those trips leaving the site. So they are now leaving on Weed Street. And it helps kind of distribute and disperse that traffic. One of the other improvements that we are proposing is we are proposing a, an all stop control intersection at the intersection of Elm and Weed. So currently today, under existing conditions, Weed Street is free flowing. There are no stop signs on Weed Street and raised during this, these previous hearings, there were concerns about the speed on Weed Street, how car, how fast cars were going and concerns about an unsafe condition. As part of our proposed improvements, we are proposing to provide stop signs traveling northbound, southbound on Weed Street, which will help address those concerns raised by the commission to allow for some additional traffic control to slow down those vehicles on Weed Street. And it'll also improve the operation for the vehicles on Elm Street, which currently face a stop sign that has free flowing movements going north and south in each direction. As actually demonstrated in our revised traffic impact assessment, the, there's a considerable improvement for operations on Elm Street. And in fact, you know, the previous or the existing conditions and the existing delays experienced by a driver on Elm Street approaching Weed Street were upwards of almost forty-six seconds in the morning and twenty-five seconds in the afternoon. By our proposal of incorporating additional stop signs on Weed Street, we're actually reducing that, those delays on Elm Street to twelve seconds in the morning and thirteen seconds in the afternoon. And we're improving the operation at that approach from a F and a D to a B in both those conditions. As, you know, so as part of our plan, actually, if you could go to slide number I think it's number four, or actually three, start with three. So these are a little bit hard to see, but I know we can try to zoom in the best we can. So additionally regarding circulation and concern, there was a lot of concern about. additionally regarding um, circulation and concern, there was a lot of concern about um vehicular cir- circulation, both for trucks and also for emergency vehicles. Um, so we provided analysis and truck turning movements for um, uh, not only New Canaan fire apparatus, but also for um Westport's fire apparatus, because there were some concerns raised regarding, you know, this was a potential, you know, four alarm incident where they had to have responses from multiple agencies beyond just New Canons. You know, Westport has a large, some larger equipment than the town of New Canaan does. So we actually made sure and we designed this site to accommodate the largest possible um, emergency vehicle, which may need to come to the site and, and provide some of those uh, those critical um, support. So we've actually provided um, turning templates for full, um, again, regular delivery vehicles, New Canaan fire apparatus and Westport um, turning figures. Uh, we've also provided some figures, so uh, the, the figure up on the screen right now is, I believe, um, the vehicle path for a New Canaan fire truck. And again, in the impact study, we also have Westport and then the deliveries. And we have those both coming in from Elm and also leaving the site on weed. Now, I know there was a question previously about, and I'll just uh, try to circumvent it before it comes up again. There were questions if we had run the similar movement for vehicles entering and exiting off of weed street. Um, we did not, but however, I can say that just from my experience, that if you can design driveway geometrically to accommodate inbound vehicles or, or egressing vehicles, generally speaking, it'll, it'll also work from an inbound standpoint as well. So um, what we've done with this geometry is, is identified that um, emergency vehicles can enter, access and circulate the site without any um, uh, impacts to their ability to adequately provide all life, health and safety measures needed um, for a project like this. Um, and we've been able to do that in a way so that we're actually not even crossing over um, uh, yellow lines and things like that. So it all happens in their own lanes as, as I know it was uh, addressed and raised as, as part of the previous uh, previous applications. Um, uh, let's see. So um, one of the things is we have uh, we are currently proposing to a full stop sign controlled intersection for Elm and Weed. Under have been discussions with uh, uh, deputy chief, uh, de Frederico, um, and he has indicated that he would not be opposed to this from a traffic control standpoint, from a traffic control measures, as uh, you know, we do believe that this could represent a, a possible improvement from a safety standpoint to address other concerns raised. Um, we have uh, um, you know, uh, in our response and our revised impact study, this has been reviewed again by the town's peer review consultant. Um, we think that we've actually adequately addressed all of his concerns. I'm sure you'll hear from him again today, but I think he has um, indicated um, that we've generally and satisfactorily addressed the majority of the issues of concern and questions that were raised during the earlier review. You know, I know there was some discussion regarding ADA accessibility. Um, I can say that uh, it's my understanding that this building has been designed in accordance with ADA requirements, providing um ADA parking and accessible paths to and from the building, and we've met those requirements. Um, and you know, again, we believe that it's, it's in my professional opinion as a, as a traffic engineer and a professional traffic operations engineer, that this uh, proposed development and project can be constructed without any adverse impact to the surrounding traffic operations, and it will not pose any uh, life, health or safety concerns associated with uh, traffic um, related for this development.
Make sure, questions?
Did you or Mr. DeAndrea uh, ever talked to an ADA consultant um, throughout this process?
Uh, I have not.
Mr. Dander?
No.
I will say as professional engineers, we are tasked with ensuring ADA accessibility and compliance, and we've done similar assessments for other projects.
The new crosswalk across Elm Street, um, is that going to be signalized the way that the one across weed street is currently, or it's just a regular crosswalk?
Well, one of the things by incorporating additional stop sign controls, it provides additional uh, protection measures um, to kind of slow down and control speeds. I will say that any and all, um, you know, uh signage and striping will be done in accordance with the MUTCD, the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And it will be done in concert with review with uh, the town, um, Department of Public Works and the uh, police traffic authority.
So, that will it be signalized or no? I mean, will there be like the flashing beacon or?
Generally, no. Um, for, for stop sign controlled intersections with crosswalks, you don't need to provide additional flashing beacons. Those are more for mid-block uh crossings that don't have, that don't uh, control the vehicle flow.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Just a quick question. Did you look at the flows if you were to change the access where the entrance would be on weed and the exit would be on Elm?
Um, you know, we evaluated this a number of different ways. Um, from a, from a, you know, from a big picture holistic standpoint, when we looked at it, this, this represented, we believe, the best access and egress to, to get in and out of the site. Um, it addresses site distance, uh, adequately addresses site distance and ensures the best uh visibility coming from all approaches for vehicles exiting the site.
Okay, so just to, just so I, I'm not an expert in everything, obviously in this area, but so the exit out of weed is a, a safer exit than the exit out of Elm, is that the idea?
Um, not that the exit out of Elm was unsafe. Um, I think that just from a flow standpoint, this helps better distribute the, the traffic and the vehicles leaving the site.
Okay. Based on their destinations, based on.
Yeah, distribution for, for vehicles exiting and uh, traveling through the corridor.
Just have a, a question on the queue. When, when you add a stop sign on weed, did you uh, do any analysis to understand uh, how that traffic is going to back up and will it eventually block the exit into weed? Or onto weed?
Um, w- w- we did analyze queue and, and the stop, no, the movements, the, the vehicular volumes on weed and the implementation of that stop sign, it would not result in queues extending all the way to the driveway coming out of weed street.
But but it happens on Elm Street.
It, it does, but it won't anymore. Actually, there's actually a considerable improvement of queuing on Elm Street with this uh, uh, with this proposed traffic control, because it provides for um better regulation of vehicles on Elm, being able to turn onto weed.
Okay.
I had a question, sir, if I may. Um, could you talk about the sightlines on the egress? I'm in a car, I'm about to exit campus. Um, what do I see?
So, um, sure. So uh, if you're leaving um, the driveway on weed, weed street, um, we have, we, first, one of the things we did is we actually went out and installed an ATR um, to understand what the eighty fifth percentile speeds were out there to, so we could actually get a true measurement of how fast vehicles are traveling and that's without a stop sign there to ensure that we could design our driveway to meet those requirements. Um, and then, so the eighty fifth percentile speeds um, were thirty six per hour uh, northbound and thirty eight miles per hour southbound.
Speed limit's thirty. Red speed.
Yes, you know, okay. No, I understand. Um, people drive past at the speed limit and eighty five percent of the people are driving past this fi- faster than this.
Out.
Yes, that's the eighty fifth percentile speed. Um, so with that, uh, with those speeds, we would be required to provide three hundred ninety seven, um, excuse me, minimum intersection site distance of three hundred ninety seven feet. Um, and looking in four hundred and nineteen feet looking right. Um, so three ninety seven looking left, four nineteen looking right. Um, based on, we went out there, we actually did field measurements, determined how much site distance is available. We did those measurements, measuring fifteen feet off the edge of the travelway, which is in accordance with DOT requirements. Um, we have uh, nine hundred and ten feet um, looking to uh, the right and we have a thousand and twenty feet looking to the left. So we far exceed the minimum intersection site distance required. Um, additionally, and that actually would allow for um, you know, a vehicle moving at that full rate of speed. So I think traveling southbound, that may still be in a, a common occurrence, but we far exceed that by more than double what's required. And then uh, looking to the left, we're traveling northbound, they really won't be traveling at that rate of speed anymore. So we far exceed what would be required. Um, even if someone were to come to the stop sign and let's say completely blow it, we still have adequate site distance for a vehicle exiting to adequately see vehicles coming uh, northbound, whether they're taking the turn off of, off of uh Elm or just blowing right through, going northbound on weed.
Well, usually, I mean, I, I, I'm on that corner of weed and Elm a lot and you tend to creep out into weed in order to see what's going on because of walls, all that kind of stuff. It's very common on Richmond Hill Road too, and you're going onto weed, which has a lot of walls and bushes and you got to creep out in the intersection, sure you don't get yep, T-bone. Yeah. Which is, which is a bad thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I'm looking about sightlines here, particularly on the looking north, because you have a neighbor there who controls all that property. Um, you know, maybe there's a big bush, um, the lady who lives there wants to put in or something. And so again, maybe sight to let the creep out into the intersection and to see what's going on uh, that, you know, could present a hazard.
Sure. Well, one of the things that we do when we're looking at measuring site distances, we, we have to assume that any private property beyond the limits of the right of way is, can be grown with vegetation and blocked. So we actually look at you know, the available site distance from a site triangle within the right of way. So and um, you know, we measure this, for this instance, we measure this fifteen feet back from the edge of the travelway. We've been able to go a little bit closer, which kind of accommodates for those creeping up. But we think that actually based on where our proposed driveway is and the existing geometry that's out there, there's more than adequate site distance to provide that um, nine hundred and uh, ten feet looking to the, to the right. Or excuse me, um, it was actually, it was nine, ten looking left and it's a thousand and twenty looking uh, right. Um, and I would say that uh, oftentimes when you're at those intersections, I know we talked about this at Weed and Elm and the concern about coming off of Elm and some of that, you know, geometry that's there, based on where, where our driveway is, we actually don't have that same condition where some of those um, you know, corner corners have become overgrown or, or improved with walls or things like that, where our driveway is proposed, we have adequate site distance.
And just looking at that, that egress, I say, I would have to think that most of the exits are going to be turned left, because you're going to go into town or somewhere, you go north, you end up the north part of town, which tends not to be the most traveled part. You're going to Merritt, you're going to ninety five, um, you're going to Route One, you're going to town. So you'd be turning left. And so again, you got to cross traffic. I just just worry with sightlines and so forth. You know, people are to be creeping out going to get impatient. I'm going to try to get in front of that car that's moving thirty eight or thirty, forty five miles down the road and, you know, kabam. I, I worry about this, given potential sightline issues, because I still haven't seen any pictures of exactly what it looks like here on a pro forma basis. I hear your commentary, sir, but I don't see anything.
Well, you know, we did provide a, a site distance uh, exhibit, which was prepared, you know, in accordance with standard engineering methodologies. And, and obviously as a professional engineer, we have to certify the plans that we prepare and, and I'm offering testimony that, that's, that's saying that there's adequate site distance there, which, you know, we have obligations to, when, when we say things, they need to be truthful and factual. Um, you know, I'll say that y- y- you're, you're right, there are more vehicles turning left uh, out of weed street um, than uh, turning uh, right onto weed street again. Um, in the morning, we're talking about thirteen cars. And in the afternoon, we're talking about fifteen cars throughout an hour.
Hmm, okay. It sounds a little low to me, but I'll spot you on that.
Well, i- i- if, you know, we certainly talked about trip generation at the last uh, hearing. Um, we can certainly touch on that again. It sounds like there's some concerns regarding some of the trip generation numbers. I'll say that for a project, just to rehash that, so for, again, for a project of this for this size, um, yeah. Could we get some, could we get some order? Uh, uh, maybe some decorum in the?
Please continue.
Sure, so.
It's, it's not too bad yet. I will ask them, but you're, you're doing perfectly fine.
Thank you. Um, so again, for, for a project to this size, a hundred and one total units, um, one of the comments that we did respond to from the last uh, comments from the peer reviewer, they want us to make sure we're using the current trip generation manual, which is an industry standard manual provided by the institution transportation engineers that's used locally, nationally to um, uh, correctly um, anticipate the number of trips generated by a proposed development. So for a hundred and one units using land use code two twenty one, which is the land use code that closely resembles this project, it would generate a total of thirty three trips in the morning. That's eighteen entering, fifteen exiting, and then during, that's the morning peak hour, and then during that afternoon peak hour, it's a total of thirty trips. Um, thirteen entering and seventeen exiting the proposed development. So when you actually assign those trips to the driveways, again, turning left onto weed, it's a total of thirteen trips in the morning and, and uh, fifteen trips in the afternoon.
I'm curious on one thing and maybe and help me out here. Uh, I'm thinking pre-COVID and co- post-COVID. Now, one of the things I found personally, I don't want to sort of personalize it too much, but you know, I spend most of my time working at home now. So I think a lot of people do. Maybe you do too. I don't know.
Still going in the office.
Something about. Thing going on, yeah. And so I, I found, you know, before, when I had to go to the office every day, I was sort of in one, out one, and that was it. And now it could be two, three times a day, because I'm running an errand in the middle of the day and so forth. And so I'm wondering I, I think other people do this too. And so I'm, and you're nodding your head, so I think there's some agreement on this. I'm, I'm wondering, are some of the trip numbers really refreshed for the new world uh, we live in of hybrid work and more people working from home and running errands in the middle of the day, which is what I do and a lot of other people do. I've been in town traffic, it's a lot different than it was pre-COVID, I'll say that, but so help me out here, what?
Sure, so, so, so I think, um, you know, obviously uh, trip generation rates, they can evolve, right? Um, these were all, you know, uh, there were certainly a lot of studies done pre-COVID. Um, and the DOT um, paid a lot, paid really close attention to stuff like that, because they wanted to make sure that projects or, or applicants or, or engineers like us weren't relying on um, COVID numbers, because obviously there's a difference there. I'll say that while there has been, there has been and there was a uh, preponderance of work from home. I'll say that a lot of industries and a lot of uh, major organizations are actually going away from that. I think you know, there are a lot of uh, you know, Fortune fifty, one hundred, five hundred companies that are now saying it's back to work. It's back to work two, three days a week. Things change, right? But one of the other benefits for a project like this is its proximity to the train station. You know, we have to remember that this project is being um, proposed in a way and in an area that there likely will be um, use and utilization of that rail line, which is obviously reflected in the trip generation. You know, I think anecdotally, I think that, you know, generally um, trip generation numbers may um vary or waiver on a day-to-day basis and a project-by-project basis and a use basis. But I would, I would say that's in my professional opinion, the, the generation rates that we see here would not, you know, uh, uh, it would not be expected to, to waiver in a, in a significant way. I wouldn't expect to see you know, double the amount of trips coming out of development like this. Um, you know, if it was ten percent, maybe twenty percent, and even then, we're talking about a, a, a fraction of, of a few vehicles. And I think with our expanded analysis, uh, one thing I failed to mention is not only do we you know, update our analysis, we push it out to twenty twenty four for build, we also added additional intersections. And even if you were to, to grow our trip generation rate by twenty percent to affect or to address the, the comments that you're raising, this still would not have an adverse impact or create any, any uh, safety concerns from a traffic standpoint.
So I, I have several questions with respect to the reference table that was used. So I'm actually on page two of section three of the, your response report. And it says the trip generation was revised to reflect land use code two twenty one and then refers apparently to a reference table of section eleven called the Mid-Rise Residential Close to Rail Transit Trip Generation Manual. So my assumption about this and, and looking at the significant data sets that were provided there, y- you use a reference table that assumes that people are going to use the public transportation. Probably you had a choice of selected reference tables, is that right?
Uh, that's correct.
And, and if you chose a suburban reference table, um, did you do the calculation of what trip volumes would look like? It, it, and, and there's a second part of that is, you know, a couple of the other assumptions presumably are based on the probability that people are going to use, for example, in particular Metro North. Were there any constituent analysis of the eh, expected age of the tenants, low income and non-low income? And where they are likely to work?
There's no, there's no, um, whatever, whenever traffic engineers are, are tasked with looking at a project like this or analysis like this, we do not get into the granular um, details of might be renting a unit or their age or where they would work. It would simply be an impossible task to try to um, look at something like that. What I'll say is that um, uh, the the transportation industry as a whole, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, the Department of Transportation in Connecticut, and all the surrounding ones that all use the same reference materials, these are done, these are, these, these are established based on comparable projects. And when you mentioned, you know, uh, land use two twenty one and the mid-rise, there are a myriad of different generation rates that you can use if a project looks a little bit different, if there were townhomes, if they're duplexes, if they're high-rise or low-rise, if, you know, and all of those things, when you, when you look at them as a whole, it does give some pretty good consistent rates across projects, which can give not only municipalities, but also departments of transportation. Property owners, uh, yeah, project proponents, a reasonable level of confidence that the trips are appropriate. Um, and they're going to be a reasonable estimation of what actually happens. Now, I'll also say that as part of our initial study, there were comments raised about, or excuse me. It's part of our initial study, we looked at a, an older version of trip generation rates and we did our analysis. Those other iterations actually anticipated a total of forty five trips during the weekday afternoon peak period compared to thirty, which were identified in the updated analysis and land use codes, which were recommended by the town's peer reviewer.
And I, I read.
Just let me finish. So in the previous analysis that actually represented fifty percent more trips in the afternoon. It's still did not have an adverse impact for the surrounding roadway network.
And, and so my question though, and I, I read and participated in the prior reviews. But my, my real question is the reference index here, mid-rise residential. What are, for example, to either side of that, what are the reference tables that one might have selected? And would they produce signish significantly different traffic usage rates?
Sure. So. You know, I don't know if I have the full gamut of. I have a big folder here, so I may have it if you just bear with me for a second, because I know we looked at a couple of different iterations. You know, I'm not sure. I don't have those other trip generation rate tables established. Um, or, or with me available at my fingertips to tell you what other projects that, that look differently would generate. You know, and, and, and this actually, for this use of, of multifamily housing, it's actually the setting location is for general urban or suburban. So it is not for an urban environment. It is also applied to suburban environments. But, but unfortunately I don't have those other, uh, codes to tell you what those other average rates might be.
So, so, uh, and again, I don't know, this may go to Mr. Hollister for, for follow up. I would just be very interested to see, because what a key discussion point here is the assertion of the applicant that the flow rates with the redesigned plan, which I think is significantly better, but that the flow traffic rates are going to be quite low. I think it would be useful and informative to understand if we went to another reference table, perhaps the next in sequence, would they be dramatically different or not? And, you know, the, I appreciate the fact that you went to version eleven of this from version ten or whatever it was, but it's still applied to the same reference table. And it may be that it doesn't may, I, I understand your methodology. I, I even believe that it might even be highly accurate. I just want to know what would happen if we went to another reference table. Would it double the flow, for example?
Well, I, I mean, the, the, the thing about these reference tables, right, is they're, they're established based on the specific details of the projects that they relate to, right? So, so for a, so for a, a mid-rise multifamily housing, this is an assumed rate. The proposed development that's before you meets the definition and criteria of a mid-rise multifamily housing in proximity to transit. If you were to say, well, what would it generate if it was a single family home or a restaurant, you know, those are, it's kind of an apples and oranges comparison.
I, I understand that, but, but my point is you, you had a selection choice of building descriptors that this might fit, one of them being acts quote, quote, close to rail transit, right? I, I presume that you opted for the one which you felt was most appropriate. But it is possible that a similarly situated traffic engineer professional presumably might have chosen another reference table.
Well, I, I can say that the, the beauty of the diligent work of this commission is that the town has engaged a third party peer review professional who is also highly respected in the field. And they have agreed and concurred with the trip generator we've utilized for this development.
Okay. Yeah. So, um, thank you. There is meaningful improvement, at least from a traffic perspective in this, in this latest iteration of the design. It, it seems like, and correct me if I'm wrong, that's a, a good chunk of that, um, meaningful positive change is coming from having the egress point, um, on Weed Street along with the three-way stop. And if that is the case, um, you know, these are not monumental changes. Uh, and I imagine that's something that you contemplated early on and, and your work. So I'm wondering why those design changes, which are, you know, only receiving recently, weren't incorporated into the original site design.
Well, w- w- well, again, I think, I think projects improve as they go through a process, right? As, as if, if, if. Whenever we engage with a town or a public or a peer reviewer and they take another set of eyes on a set of plans, there's always room for improvement. And I think this is a great example of that. I mean, you know, w- w- why this wasn't done with the initial application. There were probably a number of reasons why we looked at the, whether we did, right? We had an existing driveway on Elm Street. We were trying to minimize curb cuts. We were trying to better manage access. Right? Um, this is just, you know, projects evolve, projects get better.
Yeah. Well, the, the reason why I'm asking, and I think it gets to the question that that Commissioner Chris was getting with, uh, getting to with Ms. Blackburn, is trying to get a sense of when someone like you comes onto a project, you know, an expert in this field. Are they given real limitation and parameters about, you know, the, the discretionary choices they'd like to make? If they were considering things like public health or public safety as a for, as a foremost priority, as opposed to the budget of the applicant. And we're trying to kind of weigh, since we do have to weigh, balance out the need for affordable housing with public health and public safety concerns. What this, how this was expressed to you or Ms. Blackburn or Mr. DeAndrea and others in terms of, you know, how much leeway did you have to actually come up with a good to site, site design that incorporate public health and safety issues as this for, from a traffic perspective increasingly does versus budgetary constraints to make this more economical or more profitable for the applicant.
Well, th- they didn't teach me anything about project economics and engineering school. They, they, they taught me.
How was it presented to you, sir? How was, you know, the amount of leeway? This is something, I can imagine this, the, the Weed Street egress point or three-way stop was something that was just an epiphany. So how did this process evolve?
Projects evolve over time, but, and they, they evolved through, they, they evolved through consistent and thoughtful discussion and contemplation by a project team. Okay. So, so for as much time and thought and consideration is, is being put into this application on behalf of the commission and the public, I can assure you that's probably a fraction of the time. That's been put into this from a consideration standpoint on behalf of the project team. So, so again, I mean, as an engineer, right, I, I don't necessarily get to play with dollars and cents from a project standpoint. I have to look at something and say, how can I, how can I use my professional expertise to ensure that, you know, the, the, the recommendations needed to ensure that there's a safe and adequate means of access to negress and circulation through a project. That's what I'm charged to do with. That's, that's what I have to do as a professional is, is I have to make minimum recommendations that are acceptable. And they're not just acceptable to me, they're acceptable to the, the town's third party peer review to, you know, the Department of Public Works as they work through access permits, things like that. So that's what we have to do as professionals. Again, I, I can't, I, I can't tell you that I, that I was the person who came up with this initial idea and did the entire layout all by itself. I, I, that's, that wasn't my role. My role from a traffic engineering standpoint is we are looking to do a hundred and one units here. How can we make something work that, uh, will not have an adverse impact on the traffic operating conditions of the roadway network and.
Within a specific budget?
No, nope. My improvements have nothing to do with construction costs. Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody?
One quick question on your, um, trip, uh, counts, uh, do, do those include box trucks deliveries?
They do. They include all means of, of, of traffic, whether it's, um, just passenger vehicles or heavy vehicles. Yes. That they're, they're all worked into the overall rate anticipated.
Thanks.
I'm sorry. I have one funny question, if I may, on, on traffic count issues, if a building, a multifamily building is near a Metro North Railway Depot, that's the question.
Would it be the same regardless of the depot?
Um, n- no proximity. So this is actually a new.
They're all the same proximity to the depot, but it may be a different depot. We have depot here, depot there, depot.
So, so it's, it's, uh, it is not specific to the type of transit facility. It's whether or not it's close to a transit facility. So.
Okay.
And, and there's a, and there's a, 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 a distance, um, criteria that's in there in order to meet those, to meet the criteria of, of, of something in proximity to transit.
Distance, you mean distance from the dwelling to the railway depot? That's the distance you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay. So for example, I'm thinking of Metro North Railway stops. We have New Canaan, which is the end of the line. We have West Reading, many people, nobody been to West Reading. It's out in the middle of the woods. I, I don't know anyone in this right mind who's going to use that to commute to anywhere, but you know, okay, it exists. Noggettuck. So you're saying there are different, different, um, traffic uses, different facilities, convenience for each of these. You'd say, well, if it's, um, twenty feet away, or it was, yeah, let's say quarter, third, quarter of a mile away, just to put something, you're going to treat them all the same as far as traffic counts in use of that.
That is how the Institute of Transportation Engineers is character driven, something like this. Yes.
I have a tough time wrapping my mind around this because there's a big difference between Stanford. I'm talking main, one, there was only one in Stanford, should actually know as it's, there's Springdale and, and, and Glenbrook too, but main one in Stanford, that's one thing versus New Canaan versus Cannondale versus West Reading versus Noggettuck. I would assert that these are differences, not distinctions as far as the usability of these, um, railway depots and really how much traffic count you get at each of them and to treat them all the same as far as I'm going to go there and use it. I just, I have trouble believing it.
Sure. Well, well, I can say that even if we were to, uh, exclude the, uh, credit for a proximity and close for a project in close proximity to transit.
Yes, sir.
The trip generation associated with the project to this size and scale still would not have an adverse impact on traffic operating conditions.
Still using the treating all railway depots or train stations the same, just.
You know, it's, it's, it's certainly an interesting, um, it is, it is a very well founded point. And, you know, perhaps that's something that we could work with the Institute of Transportation Engineers on to provide better definition for this type of use. Maybe it's based on, uh, uh, trips in and out of the rail facility. It certainly could add some complexity from an analysis standpoint, but, um, I can study to see for sure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. One quick thing, uh, Chairman, may I ask one additional question?
Sure.
Go ahead. So, um, thank you for the presentation tonight. Certainly nice to see the, the considerations. I was curious, I couldn't find any write-up on the and maybe this isn't within your scope, but the, the actual construction period. So you know, it's a big building, so tearing it down and building it up and all the site work and all the, the dump trucks that all of that work. You know, building a library. I know, uh, the applicants involved in the library buildup and the layup location. So where's, have you considered what the layup location and where the, the dump trucks would go for the construction? And the safety measures around.
We didn't do an analysis of construction vehicles. Um, that wasn't part of our task. It was more about the proposed multifamily building and, and what that traffic impacted.
Okay. Cause it, it does, it's going to be a bigger building than library and, and the other big buildings that are built around. So I just would expect that we want to see something on the safety of, of that aspect of construction and build period. Is that perhaps when the future or is that?
Um, I mean, generally, I think most, uh, uh, it, it depends, not all, um, uh, analysis like that aren't necessarily typically required of all projects from a construction standpoint.
Okay.
So.
Gotcha. Thank you for that.
Very good. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Joe Verstig. I represent the applicant in this matter. I'm the independent building code, fire safety code and fire safety consultant. My credentials are I'm a licensed building official in the state of Connecticut, a certified fire marshal in the state of Connecticut. The topics we're going to discuss tonight, really briefly, I'm not going to go into great detail unless you have questions. You'll find them in tab seven is my initial report from back in August twenty eighth. Those findings in that report have not changed, in that the project for the most part has not changed. Specifically with regards to the building construction. As initially stated, uh, this building can be built, uh, under the Connecticut State Building Code, uh, in compliance with the code. It is, um, a fire resistant, one-story garage out of non-combustible materials. The top which there are several stories of, of wood frame construction. Now, when you say wood frame construction, everybody goes wood, it can burn. The type of construction for it to be that tall, that many stories is what we call protected construction. Which means that all of the structural elements of that building, the exterior walls and floors and interior bearing support columns, all have a one-hour fire resistance rating. So there are no combustible structural materials that are exposed to a fire. They're all hidden behind sheet rock. In addition, the building is fully sprinkled. At the request of the fire chief, because it's a wood frame building, it's allowed to have wooden materials on the side, wood clapboards, vinyl siding and so forth. But the fire chief and fire marshal have asked that the exterior materials be changed to a non-combustible, like a hardy cementous type of siding board. Which won't ignite from a brush fire or a tree or will help with the exposure from the hypothetical truck fire. The sprinkler system will not only extinguish the fire, but because of the building's height, there are going to be stand pipes, which are manual pipes within the, uh, the exit stairs for use by the firefighters. So they only have to carry a minimal amount of hose. They don't have to stretch it from the fire truck into the building, up the stairs and then down the hallways. They connect to it at the, at the individual floors and they do so within the protected stairways. So the building is fully compartmentalized due to the exit stair enclosures, the fire rated corridor system within the building. The fire resistance separation between stories of the building. As well as separation between the individual dwelling units. So the idea in if a fire were to occur, the concept is always to keep it within the compartment as small as possible. And here it's the size of a dwelling unit. Also, we're going to extinguish it rather quickly with the sprinkler system. In most cases, a sprinkler system in a residential occupancy will extinguish the fire with one sprinkler activating about eighty-seven to ninety percent of the cases. In the remaining cases where one sprinkler doesn't do the job, not more than two or three additional sprinklers will extinguish that. How do we know that this building is going to be code compliant? Well, there's a state statute that requires that plans be submitted as substantial completion to the, or substantial compliance with the building and the fire safety code. Uh, the plans you have before you are, are not the construction documents that would be submitted. Mr. Lao's report on, on your behalf actually states that these are conceptual diagrammatic for planning and zoning purposes. The documents that are submitted for building permit that are required by state statute and building and fire safety code to be reviewed by the fire marshal and building official before a, a building permit is issued. Will probably grow to an excess of several hundred pages with a detail that's required for the code official to determine that degree of compliance. So they're required to do the review only when they determine substantial compliance. So they allowed to issue a building permit. And then follow up onsite inspections during the construction phase, as well as final inspections before certificate of occupancy issued are conducted by the fire marshal and building official. If they need assistance, the state building official and state fire marshal's offices will also assist in that process. They also have access to third-party independent consultants to do the plan review on their behalf. With regards to fire department access, the plan you have been discussing this evening With regards to fire department access, the plan you have been discussing this evening is dramatically improved over what we first looked at. When we first looked at it, it was compliant with the fire safety codes requirements for fire department vehicle access. It had one way in. It was a minimum twenty feet wide on the roadway. It provided access to within fifty feet of an exterior door. And you could walk around the building not more than four hundred and fifty feet. And circumvent the building. That's all that's required by the fire safety code. The other concern is sometimes you have to drive into a site a little bit too far, and the arbitrary number that's been determined by the code people is one hundred and fifty feet. So if you drive in and have no way to turn around. If you're more than one hundred and fifty feet, you need to turn around. You either need a cul-de-sac or what they call a turkey leg or a Y turn. We've all done that. We've gone down the wrong road. That's required. But in this case, on the initial drawings, there was no spot on this building, on this site where it was compliant. Was totally compliant. The suggestions by the council, the suggestions by Mr. Kingsbury improved it to the point where you have two ways in. You don't have any dead ends or turnarounds. The roadway has been widened a little bit. There were comments about the ability to the driveway to support the truck. That's a requirement of the fire code. There's a re- some comments about overhangs and obstructions thirteen feet, six inches. Can we get the truck underneath? Absolutely. That's part of the plan review process that the fire marshal does to determine compliance with the fire safety code. And if it's vague or not shown, he doesn't issue the permit and he writes it as a citation. When the designer responds and documents that meets that requirement, then they get the approval to build it. And then he goes on site and he measures it. So all of this is taken care of. A lot of the suggestions have been incorporated in uh into the plans. And you don't normally see those on on a site plan, but they've been provided here and have been improved. As far as fire department staffing, there were some comments made by Chief Kingsbury that I didn't take into a mutual aid, and he mentioned an NFPA document. I don't know if you've read it. It's available online. It's the standard number seventeen ten. What is? It's a guideline. It's not a mandatory document by any building code. It's not mandatory in any city in the state of Connecticut. No jurisdiction adopts it. I'll tell you who uses it. Unions. Because it has minimum staffing levels. So they go in a budget time and they go, look, we should have thirty five people. But it's a guideline, and it's a guideline that allows provides guidance and performance objectives for fire department management in conjunction with town management to decide what they want their fire department to do. Do we run a fire department that puts out fires? Do we run a fire department that also runs an ambulance that also does this, also does this? Or are we just a suppression force? With that in mind, they set forth some some performance objectives for how long does it take you to answer the phone? Shouldn't ring and ring and ring. And then how long does it take you to react, actually get moving to do what you're supposed to do? How long should it take you to get the first piece of fire department equipment to the building? And then the second piece. Now again, these are guidelines, and you can evaluate them as a chief and say, you know, we're doing pretty good. We're not doing good. We should do some other things. Maybe I don't have enough manpower in town in my employ. That's the benefit of mutual aid. I know when I get a fire at this address, usually I'm there for a long period of time, even though it's a minor fire, we're usually there and committed. Automatically, we start to bring in neighboring fire trucks to cover in our firehouse. So there is a mutual aid concept. It's been around forever. It's just turned into more contractual issues now. So that's that's pretty much taken care of. Most of the other suggestions uh have been preferences and not mandates, such as generator sets and the type of sprinkler system, and we go back to the basement garage with smoke exhaust and smoke management. It's an open garage. There are no requirements for carbon dioxide detection or carbon dioxide evacuation. Why? Because it doesn't concentrate. It's only in enclosed garages. And we're an open garage, so you get the natural generation, natural ventilation and flow of air. So we don't build up carbon dioxide. I guess the last thing I would say is, and I can speak to the uh the generic comment about ADA. Um, we say ADA and we think of the Americans with Disabilities Act and the US Department of Justice. When in reality, what we often mean is the ability to access into a site and then the ability to use the site. So we say ADA as sort of like a a catchphrase. This particular project, because they're rental properties for tenants to live in, whether they own or rent, is not subject to the Americans with Disabilities Act under the US Department of Justice. That applies to public accommodations, transient lodging hotels, college dormitories fall into that. When we do the reviews for dormitories for clients, we do look at ADA for that. We do consult on ADA. But for private dwellings, it's subject to the HUD requirements, housing and urban development, a portion of the federal government, and they have a fair housing accessibility standard. Now, that requirement has been around since the seventies. The trouble has been that when you submit a set of plans to the town, if you're a designer, you have to satisfy the building code, the fire code, fire prevention code, all Connecticut rules and regulations. And if it's a public accommodation, the requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act. If it's a private housing stock, you have to satisfy the requirements of for fair housing. The problem with the disconnect is those are federal guidelines. So when the plans come in for review by the building official and fire marshal, they don't look at ADA. It's not within their scope. It's a federal document. They don't look at fair housing because it's not within their scope. It's a federal document. So to make this or to eliminate the disconnect, the Fair Housing Housing and Urban Development Group has worked consistently with the International Code Council, which is the developer of the document Connecticut uses for its building code. And HUD has recognized the International Building Code and its accessibility and safe building standard A one seventeen one as a safe harbor. What does that mean? The federal government says you got to comply for multifamily housing with our fair housing standards. Or you can meet the International Building Code. And it's the A one seventeen one. That's a safe harbor. You can either follow our book or you can follow their book. So designers often follow the building code and then go to the ADA. May not, ADA may not comply with the fair housing. Two different bodies of federal government, two different committees, two different sets of rules. So when you comply with a document, you design a residential building in Connecticut. You're guaranteed through the design requirements and through the review that your building official does that the building will satisfy as a safe harbor, the federal requirements for accessibility and usability. So any concerns you have should be alleviated. If you have any questions.
Uh, I do. So I understand what you're saying in terms of the NFPA standards just serving as um guidelines uh and not a mandate. However, the the conclusion from Mr. Kingsbury that's related to those guidelines um in terms of response times was as follows. Given the travel distances and response times of mutual aid resources, New Canaan, in fact, New Canaan would in fact be challenged to fight a fire and perform rescue operations at a building as currently proposed for Weed Street. So what essentially Mr. Kingsbury is saying is that um with the building designed as is, and maybe this partially incorporates the limitations we have in our on duty force, but it is what it is. That this application as proposed would cause an increase in likelihood of harm, public health and public safety issues in that statement. So do you agree with him? And if not, um, what is your difference of opinion concerning whether New Canaan would be challenged to fight a fire and perform rescue operations at a building uh as currently proposed as this one?
I have not done a factual analysis of the data for response times and the guidance and performance objectives within NFPA seventeen ten, nor have I been provided any by Mr. Kingsbury to independently evaluate whether that statement made by him is factual or not. The real person who knows that answer is the fire chief.
Okay, thank you.
And it's important to note that they haven't weighed in.
Just have a a question about a statement you made. Um, you you indicated that um the building code official uh who would review the the plans would uh approve the uh the project for permit uh and thus if the building would meet all ADA requirements? By putting words into your mouth, but in essence, that's kind of what you're you said.
Kind of in essence, that is what I said. The the um the requirements that apply, not ADA, but in the fair housing accessibility standard have been through a joint committee, an ad hoc committee of the International Code Council, the Means of Egress Committee, which I was a member of at ICC, principal voting member. Um, and and the um uh the representatives from the Fair Housing Council, uh as well as the uh multi housing task force, as well as the HUD people, have joined together and said, listen, how do we make the requirements the same? We say this, your book should say this. We say this in the federal standard, you guys have to address that. And and it's been brought in. So it deals with what does it apply to? And and not just, and there are a number of exceptions because the building code doesn't just address residential, but for residential, it addresses site access, access into the building, the number of entrances, usability within the building, the number of accessible units or type A dwelling units, the number of type B dwelling units, those that are adaptable. Uh, the requirements for clear width on the doors. Clearance on maneuvering clearances on the door, whether something can project in. How much room do I need for a for a shower that's three foot by three foot? I need to have twelve inches behind me so that I can move the chair. So all of those specifications that are in HUD for type A and B dwelling units are in the building code and not specifically in the building code, but it's adopted reference standard, which is mandatory, the A C A one seventeen one, accessible and usable buildings. Standard.
Uh, okay.
That's what I said.
But I but I think uh we're missing a fine point here. Your ADA is uh civil legislation.
Yeah.
That means the courts decide if you if you conform or not. Building officials, fire officials cannot.
Make that decision correct for ADA, which is not applicable to residential housing unless it's transient in nature.
Even when it's under an eight thirty G application where there's um a set aside specific by the state for affordable housing, which then makes it a not a strictly residential uh uh development where you have. You know, um, I won't say commercial, but you have uh more readily accessible or more commonly accessible areas by the general public, not just a specific residence. I completely agree with you that when it's when you're dealing with a single family residence, for example, well, best for all, you can do whatever you want.
Right.
But when you're dealing with a larger development that is getting government funding and is government mandated, wouldn't you need to comply with ADA and C one seventeen one, whatever, however you want to interpret, I'm just using ADA.
The accessibility requirement.
Accessibility requirements, not only on pathways, site conditions, doors, garage, elevator access, et cetera, but also certain number of accessible class A or dwelling units. Wouldn't that also apply like it does? For example, you know, it's a commercial application, but if you were in a hotel, you have the same sort of a blend. But in this case, it's not a strict residential development. It's falling under the umbrella of a federal or a state mandate and a government requirement on a certain structure of housing that's there.
Right. Let me go back. You're right. One hundred percent. ADA is a body of law that deals with accessibility under part part four, as far as usability of the building. We'll talk about Title One that deals with hiring and unfair practices or Title Two or Title Three, which are government buildings versus private buildings. Title Four, the nuts and bolts of the old two thousand and four Americans with Disabilities Accessibility Guidelines, the ADAG, the nuts and bolts with dimensions, distances. That is only enforceable by the US Department of Justice. And the way they do that is through complaint. So you're right, there's no plan review. So if I were reviewing as a code official kind of plans for a um a hotel. I'm going to follow the building code. Well, who looks at it for Americans with Disabilities? Not me. It's not. It's a body of federal law that I have no authority to apply. Well, so you go to the federal government, you go to the US Attorney's Office in Hartford and and or the home office in Boston, you say, I got these plans. Could you review them? The locals not gonna. They're going. We don't do reviews. You have a complaint, we'll come out and we'll measure whether you're you're right or wrong, and then we'll find you, but that's it. But that body of law specifically under its applicability does not apply to residential housing. Federal money, state money, doesn't matter. If it's a rental income, it doesn't apply. Why? Because the fair housing standard was there years before we ever thought up. ADA. And if it's federal property, ADA doesn't apply. There's ABA, the American Barriers Act. And that's even different. That's that's a separate body of law for the feds because it gives them more leeway on what they can do and can't do. So the rules are different for you and I versus a federal agency. But it has nothing to do with whether to rent or not. The big question has always been if I rent it like a college dorm, like a hotel, I come in and I rent for one or two nights. Okay, it's under ADA, not fair housing. If I come into a college dorm, do the majority of people have another place to go? Do they have some other place to go? Yeah, I go home. May not be across town, but it might be across the country. But do I have another residence? Yeah. Then it's not under the standard. It's under fair housing, and those are the judgments that have to be made. The building code just takes it and says, listen, here's the rules. We know that we're going to deal with for residential properties, we're going to deal with a fair housing, we're going to incorporate as much ADA as we can as far as what we think is intelligent, and then we're not going to go any farther than that. So but for this property, HUD has said if you meet the building code, that's an option to meeting the federal standards.
Sir, uh, this is Commissioner Chris again. So if I understand you correctly, uh, because of the nature of this proposed um building, uh, there is no requirement that it meet ADA standards. Is that a yes or no?
Correct. The Americans with Disabilities adopted by US Department of Justice.
You don't need to do it. There's no requirement.
Correct.
Um, the um fellow per in its wisdom may decide to have some or some compliance or full compliance if there's a commercial judgment, and that's a good thing, but other than that, there's no need to do anything.
Correct.
Okay. One of the question, different one. Um, is there a trust system in the structure of this building?
Um. I don't know if we've gotten that far in the design, but but very typically there are. Instead of using solid blocking two by twelves, there are typically some form of trust system.
I bring this up because um uh, there are twenty one years ago was by the um World Trade Center when it caught fire in my office, block away. Uh, I remember the day. So.
Does it?
Yeah, anyway, um. When I was looking at, thinking about this and watched many of the um documentaries afterwards. It's some very senior fire folks talking about the structure of the building, and it was a trust system they had there, they said. And their phrase, and it stuck in my mind, and I have no idea why, but it's don't trust the trust. And that it can be unreliable, tends to go splat. And so I'm thinking about safety issues, not whether you check the right boxes, but it's a practical matter, whether there is a uh potential safety issue in using a trust system for a substantial building like this. So help me out.
No, the um, you know, trusses have always been, um, you know, the comment of an old fire chief is trust has been killing firemen for years. The issue is, well, the issue is not so much the trust per se, but a lack of evaluation. Were you aware there was a trust in the building? Was it that kind of construction? Did you know that? Did you preplan? And how long has the fire been burning? And where is the fire? And and what load is on it? So for the most part, in the World Trade Center, one of the concerns, and everybody thinks steel is better. The problem with steel is it absorbs heat energy, and it diffuses that heat energy along the length of steel. And steel tends to do what? It gets soft, and therefore can't carry the load. And that's exactly what happened in the World Trade Center. A little bit familiar with the the issues with the World Trade Center. When I was chairman of the the NFPA five thousand building code, representing, I was representative of the International Fire Marshal's Association. I had that chairmanship for ten years shortly after the World Trade Center. So every bit of data that came from the National Institute of Science and Technology, Dan Mataraski's group, as well as UL, as well as the fire service, as New York City Fire through Chief Hodgins, came through my committee, and we evaluated all of those issues with the hope that, you know, could we make changes to the code? And and the answer was, there were no unnecessary, there were no changes that were necessary to be made. We're not going to prohibit steel. We're not going to prohibit the wood truss. The concern with the wood truss was, oh, it's lightweight wood, it's not that solid wood. Well, you know, you well addressed that concern. And that when we look at a floor system made out of two by material, two by two inches wide, and and ten inches or twelve inches or fourteen, depending on the span it carries, you know, it's got to be a beefier the longer it gets without supports. And the plywood flooring on top and the subflooring and the sheet rock underneath, when we subjected to full growth fire, set the couches on fire, set the chairs on fire, garages especially, set the car on fire, we know what the heat growth is, the growth potential, the heat release rates are, we know exactly at what point in time things get unbearable and what's happening inside the truss. And what we find, that with five H chipboard sheet rock, that the heat, the transmission through that thermal barrier is not significant to ignite the truss. And when you add a sprinkler to it, all you need is a piece of wood covering underneath because the sprinklers cool the fire, cool the atmosphere at the same time they put the spring, put the fire out. So whether it's wood or steel is rather immaterial in today's construction types.
Okay, anybody else?
I do have one question. You touched on the the garage.
Yeah.
I'm assuming the design of the garage in terms of the footprint hasn't changed since the June application.
Correct.
The layout, the renderings have been updated. Your, the current rendering show punctures in the lower, lower level stone clad with louvered panels along the three sides. But the rest of that garage is subterranean effectively, right? The the inner courtyard is elevated and it's completely closed off. In order to be what you were describing as naturally ventilated, doesn't fifty percent of the entire perimeter of the garage need to be open to free air?
No, fifty percent of the perimeter of the exterior wall, fifty percent of that surface area has to be available on its two sides of the building.
Okay.
It's not in all the way around that. The code hasn't figured out how, there is a garage like that. And you see it where all four sides are open. And even in the middle, even, you know, as the ramps go up and down, there's no wall, it's, it's absolutely open. The code kind of calls that like really open garage, for lack of a better term. But it doesn't tell you to do anything different, doesn't give you any credit for it.
I thought it was the perimeter of the garage getting fifty percent of free open area, even though you would that whatever that net free area is required.
Right.
You could put it on only two sides of the garage.
Right, right.
But that's not what's happening here.
Right. And let's say that it doesn't fit the criteria of an open garage. What's the building official going to do?
Make you put in mechanical ventilation.
He's going to make you put in a carbon monoxide detection system and some kind of fan assembly.
Right.
To not exhaust the carbon dioxide, but to take the concentration like when you go out of a ticketed event, you know, everybody's in their cars, we're all waiting, and you know, come on, come on, come on, I want to pay it. And somebody can't find the right change, or the credit card's dead, and we're waiting, the cars are running, the detector's going to pick it up, and it's going to kick on some fans, and it's going to disperse, it's going to spread that carbon dioxide around a little bit. So it's not a concentration where it's toxic. That's all that does. So even if it weren't an open garage, that's all it'd be required.
Okay, everybody good?
I have one more, if I may. It's on the, again, the garage, I'm picking up on Mr. Commissioner Radman's point. And not all cars have internal combustion engines. More and more you have electric engines which have lithium ion batteries.
Yes.
Now, and what over thirty deaths because of these things catching fire, they tend to burn for like a day, apparently, for a long time, it gets really hot. Hard to put out. Wondering, you know, what happens if you're in a garage enclosed or otherwise, and one of these cars catches fire? And how do you deal with that as a firefighter?
Well, well, two things. One, I would tell you that if you own one, that's a concern, right? If you're charging it, want to charge it outside.
I don't, I don't have one.
Yeah. And and if you're voting for a politician who wants to ban all internal combustion engines and go with electronic vehicles, you might want to think about that, too. Yeah, there have been some fires with electric vehicles, no doubt about it, lithium ion batteries are now the hot topic in the fire service. And I, but there are no requirements for what you do with those. New York City Fire Department is probably the most progressive with this. Their biggest concern from their hazardous materials chief, and I know this through Joe Jarden, who's a friend of mine, chief of fire prevention for New York City, we've taught for NFPA for, God, over thirty years, building and fire codes around the world. And the bigger concern is not the vehicles, the cars, it's the small appliances, it's the e-bikes, it's the scooters, because we tend to take those up the stairs.
Those hoverboards you can't pick on the plane.
Yeah, we tend to drop them. So when we drop them, we bang them, we tip them over, we nudge them, the battery gets injured. And when it gets injured, it gets real angry. Now Teslas and most of the vehicles have been tested for, you know, going down a road eighty miles an hour, running over screwdrivers and having jam in the bottom. I mean, a lot of geeks have looked at those, for lack of a
Okay.
a better term. But but the scooters, you know, where'd that battery come from? That's, that's the concern.
Back to China.
So New York City is looking at banning scooters and hoverboards and those things in New York City public housing by policy. I think at some point in time, we'll have to see how these vehicles shake out the fires, whether it it's kind of an initial phenomenon, whether it continues, it continues to escalate. Certainly, there's an NFPA standard, NFPA eighty eight A, which is the standard for parking garages. You'll see movement done there, you'll see research by the National, National Fire Protection Association's National Research Foundation will get grants to evaluate these and and make recommendations, like maybe they're parked only in open garages, maybe they're parked only near the outside walls. Right now, they're far and few between, and it haven't been a big, big issue. Yeah, there's been some vests.
Okay, let's, excuse me, sir. Sir, this is fascinating, but let's, let's get back to the application.
Sorry, responding to the question.
I know you are. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We're good.
All right. Then that's everything we have to present tonight.
Okay, super. Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, you heard a lot about the the traffic study that was done by solely engineering. The the first study, I have reviewed it for the the town, indicated a number of questions, areas that needed to be addressed. You've you've heard all of those going from the the tenth edition to the eleventh edition of the IT trip generation manual. And I'm going to talk specifically about your question of the the different standards of of residential housing in a second. The bottom line, I I think the study accurately responded to all of my minor questions about the generation, the additional intersections that needs to be studied, the year development, et cetera, et cetera. The three big issues that that seem to still be a topic of conversation is, number one, the creation of the the multi-way stop sign at Elm Street and and Weed Street. I I agree with the applicant's traffic engineer in indicating that the level of service at that intersection will improve by the installation of the stop sign, multi-way stop sign, because the stop signs assign a reasonable pattern of traffic to enter that intersection. It's always the driver on the right side. Does it work all the time? I I see grimacing already. The the fact is, it doesn't work perfectly, but a multi-way stop at that intersection is a significant improvement. In order to implement that, I spoke to Deputy Chief John DiFranco on Friday, and we spoke specifically about that. And going to your question about the the flashing beacon, quite honestly, we have never run into a flashing beacon as it exists across Weed Street currently, and it's going to need some further evaluation by the deputy chief and his traffic consultant. Whatever he comes up with as the legal traffic, traffic authority will be what's finalized at that intersection, whether it's left in place or whether it's removed, is a decision that he will make at some time in the future. As Mr. Solely indicated, he's not averse to the multi-way stop. It has its pros, it has its cons. In this case, he's prepared to support the multi-way stop at that intersection. The other area that that comes up is the the creation of the second driveway out onto to Weed Street. I was a pro of that from the first time I looked at this application. Anytime I could spoke to anybody, I would advocate that. Now it's incorporated into plans. And from a traffic standpoint, what it does essentially is take all of this site-generated traffic and put it onto an exit driveway on the property entering a public road. Therefore, if there's any delays, any adverse conditions created by that new driveway, it occurs on the developer's property and not on the public roadway system. So the the benefits of that second driveway make make this project much more viable, and in my opinion, address a lot of the issues of congestion at the intersection of Weed Street. Weed Street will, Weed Street and Elm Street will improve. The level of service projected in twenty twenty four is going to improve. We've discussed, or you've heard discussions tonight about the ADA. I wasn't aware that ADA only applied to certain developments. I thought it was a uniform requirement, and everything that I've worked on in my career had of the ADA accessible. In my opinion, there's an awful lot of discussion about making the sidewalk system ADA compliant because all you need literally is a short section of sidewalk from the garage, parallel and adjacent to that short section of driveway that goes out to Elm Street. That makes this facility ADA compliant at very minimal cost and inconvenience. I don't see any adverse impact to that. And I'll let the the applicant and his counsel respond to my observations, Mr. Hollister. The the issue of traffic generation. In in the traffic reports, only latest traffic report dated August twenty third, he talks about IT trip generation. And as I indicated a few moments ago, that the first study that was done used IT trip generation rates from the tenth edition during the preparation of the the study, the eleventh edition came out, and as part of the review, I suggested they use that. In their traffic study, he indicates that they use traffic land use code two twenty one multifamily mid-rise. Unfortunately, and this may have created some of the confusion, counselor, commissioner, on your question, because the report had land use code two twenty three affordable housing. It was a Scribner's area era, and it really didn't make an awful lot of difference, other than it just presented some wrong information. And and sticking with with that for a second, the the proper land use code was two twenty one mid-rise in proximity to railroads or transit facilities. That, interestingly, as as we went through, I I found that the data was wrong. And and I I don't know why it's gone to the national level. So you may be precedent setting on your researcher, but the numbers are just wrong in terms of the directional distribution during the morning and afternoon peak hour. The the rates themselves, the generated rates are fine, but the the number of vehicles coming in and going out are just the difference. I I would advise the commission that it's, it's not a major difference and impact. We're talking about thirty three vehicles during the morning peak hour, eighteen in, fifteen out. It would just be the reverse because logically, whether it's a facility, residential facility close proximity to transit, the outbound traffic is always going to be more than the traffic coming in. So while while the numbers created by IT are incorrect, the numbers don't change the overall impact of the the development. So the bottom line, there are some things that the the commission should be aware of. You're going to require further review and action by the legal traffic authority relative to the adoption of a multi-way stop sign. This is going to have to go back to the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation for a final review as a major traffic generator. So there will be some third, third party reviews beyond my involvement that will have some determination on whether these things that are being proposed and recommended by myself can be implemented as part of this overall application. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that the commission might have.
Commissioners? Seems we're all set. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Kingsbury?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Tom and Kane and staff and the public. For the record, I am Andrew Kingsbury, New Canons Fire Safety and Operational Peer Reviewer. I reviewed the revised plans and the supplemental materials that have come in, looked at the pertinent sections, and I have provided some that comment in my report. I've also looked at Mr. Lao's report, which was just recently entered. To avoid being redundant, I don't think I need to to really address the access for emergency vehicles, you know, other than the the one way in, the access is perpendicular to Elm Street and the one way out going on to Weed Street. As requested, multiple curbs have been installed. The applicant states that they will, the proposed landscaping will not impede fire apparatus, they will maintain it. You did hear about the the snow storage from the applicant and how they're going to handle that. But much of the internal two-way lobby area or courtyard area, I've heard it referred referred to, and the parking accesses remain unchanged. Applicant has indicated that the canopy will be pulled back with no architectural plans. I haven't seen that. So that'd be something that we're going to want to look at and make sure that that's not going to impede fire apparatus, although they are stating that it won't. Truck turning figures, you saw those were pulled up earlier in the presentation. So it's as you've seen with that interior courtyard access area, the truck turning figures, they they are still fairly close to the parking areas to the curb lines. So my concern with that is the aerial apparatus. How are we going to set up the outriggers that hold up the aerial apparatus? So in Solely Engineering's report, they've added an exhibit ten, so it's kind of in the middle of their report there. And they show the Westport Suffolk aerial apparatus set up in three different positions. They show it set up at the ends of the building, and they show it set up in front of the lobby area. And I I think they did that, or they stated they did that because it's the most demanding aerial apparatus. But what they probably didn't understand is that the configuration for New Canons aerial, their Seagrave aerial apparatus is much different than the Suffolk. So Suffolk has two H-style outriggers that come out in the middle of the truck, and New Canons has full And New Canons has four H-style outriggers, one in the middle and another set in the rear. So I had asked and put in my report that it would be beneficial to have Solway look at that. And map and show us how we're going to be able to set up that aerial apparatus. I've driven a lot of aerial apparatus, drove the Westport one for many years when I was the firefighter there before I was chief. And I've driven seagraves also. And I can tell you, just from looking at these diagrams, it's going to be very difficult. To get that aerial in there and set up. And that's kind of a critical area. Because I mentioned, I think in my first comments to this commission about the scrub area. And the scrub area is the area that the aerial can reach and touch in the building. And that's the ideal spot is to set it up in that courtyard area to be able to touch most of the building. So it's shown set up on the ends. The problem with setting up on the ends is you're only hitting the ends of the building, right? And then in front of the building, depending on where that that lobby canopy is. Depending on the reach, horizontal reach chart that's provided, New Canon has one, Westport has them. Where is that going to be able to touch? So that's that's all very important. How are we going to get that rig in there? And how are we going to get it set up? So I've been asked all along to give recommendations, and I think I've done that. So my recommendation is if we can remove some parking spots in that island to shrink that island to increase the the width of that roadway there. It would increase the circulation, the ability to set that aerial up. There's also concerns about FedEx and I and the Amazon trucks and the Uber trucks. Or Uber pulling up is if we were to have a loading zone, widen that area there. So whether we pull it back by two spots and pull that that center island or courtyard area. Back by two spots, or whether we shrink it, or ideally if we do both. So that we have much more access, that would be much better for the fire apparatus and the circulation there. I I do have great concern about the delivery trucks in areas, and I think the commissioners have shared that. We're we're kind of in a different. Work post-COVID here. And I witnessed over the weekend, Saturdays and Sundays. A lot of delivery trucks in my neighborhood, particularly my neighbor's house and my house. So with 102, 102 or 101 apartments, I've heard it stated both ways. Multiplied by the amount of delivery trucks that are going to happen here, I think it's going to be significant. So I, my recommendation would be that the applicant consider that. And the applicant considers shrinking that, pulling back that island area to address that specific issue. They did mention that they will work with a local traffic authority to put no parking signs. In front of the project on Elm Street for the entrance. Because with the tracking there, as you saw, the trucks are still going to have to swing into the oncoming traffic if there are cars parked. And and I've driven it many times. You would think no one would park on Elm Street, but you'd be surprised. So that will that will need to be addressed. But they said they are going to work with the local traffic authority on that. So you heard Mr. Verstig, and I think the engineer mentioned it too. About the driveway having sufficient capabilities to hold up the aerial apparatus and it's in the fire. It's very important that sidewalks are also reinforced. Because it's quite common for for an aerial to have to to set up on a sidewalk or in a parking space. Okay, depending on, you know. Blocking where they need to reach. So I don't know if that's in the in the code. But that would be a strong suggestion that we address that the sidewalks, and I always insisted upon on it with projects. That they can hold the weight of the emergency vehicles and also the outriggers, which hold up the aerial aerial devices. Gaps in stone walls along Elm Street and Weed Street, that'll give the firefighters access. So they've shown that in their latest submissions. Building construction and type, Mr. Verstig did an excellent job explaining that. So it'll be a podium-type building. Concrete, parking underneath, and then four stories of wood frame up above that. Mr. Verstig, I think it was Tom Brennan that came up with a never, in his New York accent, never trust a trust. Very true. It's it's taught to all firefighters, all firefighters. We don't know. And we don't have the detail how this is going to be built, but that is a consideration. And part of the concern for having a full NFPA 13 sprinkler system. So. They cite a 13 system in here. But I would be very careful that's not a 13R system because a 13R system is residential and it protects. Bedrooms, hallways, kitchens, exit areas, but it doesn't protect the void spaces where those trusses are. So there's been, and and I fought fires at these buildings where. We get a fire that gets up into that attic space, fires get into void spaces. You you have workers potentially using a torch or something. And now we have fire racing through the the trust spaces. So I am concerned about that, but I I noted in this that NFPA, full NFPA 13 system would be very important to have. Fire resistant exterior materials was was my recommendation. That is always good. You don't want to have a fire, and there's plenty of them documented where they start in a planer, you know, cigarette butt into a planer. That catches the siding on fire, runs up, gets into the soft, it burns into the attic space area. When we talk about the ventilation system, and it's kind of been a topic in that garage area. In tab one, and I believe I made of, or Adam, had said tab four, but in tab one, page four. Of search supplemental materials. Under fire response measures, they state that a garage carbon dioxide detection ventilation system. It goes on to say will be accepted as a condition of site approval. But in tab six, pages two and three, and then repeating in touch seven and on page two. It stated that it's not required. So I just don't know what the applicant is doing here. I would encourage it, and that's why I put in my report that there is that ventilation system down in those garage areas. I'm not going to dwell on the Tesla cars, but happened to be talking to a fire lieutenant from Stanford yesterday. About the fire, and you may seen in the news that they had last week, where they. Were putting 600 gallons a minute on the car for 20 minutes before they actually were able to knock down the fire. And then it was another 20 minutes of wetting it down. So put that card on in a parking garage. I. Very concerned about fires down in in parking garages. We're going to have a trash chute in this building from the architectural plans that I saw previous. Assuming that that'll still be there, that's another area where we could have fires. So fires in confined spaces, particularly in vehicles with the way they're constructed today, is a big concern for myself. We talk about staffing. Oh, stairwells and interior access. So I had recommended a third stairwell. Be added because of the remoteness of the stairwells. Again, we don't have the architectural plans. I had also recommended with the two stairwells, if we're going to have the two stairwells, can we move them closer to the lobby? So with the plans, it was a little hard to measure because of the scaling on here. I'm not really sure that the scale was right with the architectural plans. I couldn't measure from that front lobby. To the stairwell, how far that was. But I believe it's about 300 feet. So you park the fire truck. Obviously, you go on the front door, you see what the problem is, you talk to somebody, you look at the enunciator panel. And now you have to go and find a stairwell because you're not going to take an elevator. Buildings, you know, under these, the four or five stories, firefighters take stairs. Now we have to travel to a stairwell. Is it left or is it right? That distance is, from what I could estimate, again, we need to put a scale to that, is about 300 feet from what I'm estimating. That's that's far. With your gear, with your standby hose, just to get the stairwell. Now you got to climb up the stairwell. And now you leave the stairwell and you travel back across the building to where the fire would be. So I would encourage the applicant to ideally add a third stairwell near that lobby. And I think for a lot of reasons, I think residents aren't going to want to traverse to the stairwells. To to go outside. They're either going to be using the elevators all the time, or it's going to be inconvenient. So I would strongly recommend that they consider that and or moving those stairwells away from the ends. And and moving more towards the lobby. As far as the staffing. Mr. Verstig went into some detailing on NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, same folks that write the fire codes. About the 1710. So I participated in strategic studies. I've been part of them. I've read a lot of studies and really suggestion. And Mr. Verstig alluded to that is a blend. So the Center for Public Safety Excellence Insurance, as referred to as ISO Insurance Service Offices. You take a blend of that and evolve the town into that. But really what you have to do, and when you do that. You're looking at, is this building going to be what we refer to as a target hazard? Okay, when you do a risk assessment hazard assessment of the building. And we look at what are the jobs that need to be accomplished to put a fire out and rescue people in this building? And it's actually kind of simple. And the Center for Public Safety Excellence has a matrix and you start. Putting people in places. You you need a water supply, a backup water supply. So it starts up eating up people. We need to have a hose attack crew. We need to have a forcible entry crew, a ventilation crew, incident commander. We start adding those all up, the manpower gets quite high. So the Center for Professional Excellence actually is a. Higher than NFPA 1710 as far as manpower. And when you think about it, it also has to be accomplished timely, right? So we can't stretch a hose line, but then there's no one to open a door for you to, if we have to break a door or ventilate or do search and rescue. So all those numbers start to add up. So I stand by my conclusion that the way that the New Canon Fire Department is is now staffed. Okay, would not be able to in this building both perform rescue operations. And extinguisher, a fire, extinguisher fire. And I get the distances and you've all driven down to the rear parkway. And if you just, if you keep going, I don't know if you know where all the New Canon, I mean, the Norwalk Fire Station is. You know, Westport is a fire station is on Post Road East, is is could be quite a travel distance here. So they have all the times and the standards, and that's that's all incorporated in my report. And you do have a caveat that that's achieved 90% of the time. Okay, so it's understood that there are going to be those rare times in those buildings where you're not going to be able to achieve that 1710 report. And I I ran, I ran these things frequently when I was fire chief to to see if we're meeting the standards and keeping on top of that. So that's kind of a quick recap. We've covered a lot tonight, but I'm certainly available for questions from the commission.
I have a quick question that perhaps you can answer, but perhaps you can't. You're, you just suggested that in your opinion, it would be impossible. Or perhaps difficult for the current staffing of the fire department to correctly respond to a major problem. However, if you compare this building to the new affordable housing on the other side of town. Which does in fact have similar characteristics, heights. Are there distinctions that you would make, or would you make that same assertion about the staffing capacity for that project?
I think that project's a challenge also, and some of the other recent buildings in town can be, can be a challenge. I've went out to those projects. I drove around them all and looked at them all. They're not as big. The access is a little, a little bit better, a little worse on some of the spots, but generally better on some of the buildings. So yeah, it would be a challenge. And I'm sure Chief Bastard is thinking about, you know, doing hazard assessments on all these buildings to to look at them. And then. What's your mutual aid response to those areas? I know it's a little souther here, so. Is your response going to be a little better there? I I didn't map them all out, but I would suspect to be a little bit better than over on Weed Street. But those are all the considerations. And Mr. Verstig's absolutely right, is the fire chief needs to look at all those factors. It's not just 1710, it's not the what's called standards of cover for Center for Professional Excellence or Insurance Service. Or it's a blend of that. And you look at that and you look at that as a community. And where do we want to be with this? And I really have to say is, you know, I think part of your regs are written about the capabilities of emergency services in your town. I would, I would think. That we're not going to allow certain buildings or certain sized buildings or. densities because of what we're capable of challenging. But that's, you know, that's your regs. I'm not going to comment too much on that. But I think that does play into it also. And now we come with a plan that's, you know, much bigger. And how do we, how do we deal with that? It's easy to say, we'll just hire more people or, you know, you're going to, it's your problem, so.
And and a quick follow-up, in in surrounding communities. Do you have any familiarity with the sort of assessment that's been done on other? And I'm going to pull a phrase right out of this report, other mid-rise. Close to transit for fire protection purposes. I mean, I know that may be a little out of the edge of your scope, but.
So. You also, so very popular is transit-oriented development. I've reviewed a lot of these projects over the years. If you look at the Stanfords and Norwalks, Westport has some projects coming in. Very popular, the manpower, we, they assess those. But when you, when you talk about Norwalk, I believe they have 32 firefighters on duty. You know, that's a lot of folks. Westport is 15, Fairfield, I believe, has 23 or 24 firefighters on. You know, when I was chief in in Westport. Look left, look right, 32 or 23 firefighters that are, you know, available to me on top of my 15. Now, and what I failed to say is, okay, it does have volunteers, you know, so nighttime. Maybe weekends, you're going to get a much better response. So are they going to be able to meet that? Maybe, but you know, the the question really is, are we going to do that 90% of the time to to meet that staffing level? Thank you.
So just to follow up on that. So for NFPA 1710, they talk about for a comparable style building, garden style apartments, what the category is, I believe. They talk about 28 personnel on scene. Again, I've recognized that's a guideline within eight minutes. Is that eight minutes an arbitrary number? Or if it's not an arbitrary number, I assume it isn't. Can you translate in kind of more layman terms, why is eight minutes a relevant number in terms of public safety issues?
You know, I wish I could tell you factually exactly how they came up with it. But I think it's looking at the exponential fire growth in the building. That happens, you know, so it's obviously if, as the longer fire burns, it doubles and, you know, quadruples in size. So I'm guessing that where it came from, but I don't know for sure where that eight minutes.
So it doubles or quadruples in size roughly after what, what time interval?
I, again, I'll have the the numbers in front of me, but fires grow very, very rapidly. They get to a point and then they 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 really take off.
Okay. In in what surrounding towns or cities did you look at in terms of, you know, making your assessment? That we would be very challenged to fight a fire and perform rescue operations. So what are?
So I looked at New Canons, what's called their box alarm system. And looked at who the mutually partners were. And then, of course, specifically for, you know, Weed Street. And that's what's listed in my first report. So those those first responding units coming in from Norwalk, Wilton, Westport. And then we start reaching out farther to the, you know, the Dariens, the Stanfords, the Vista New Yorks and so forth. And I would imagine, I didn't look at all the box alarms, but I imagine, you know, maybe on your north side, northeast side, you're going to be pulling in Ridgefield and other towns, so. But that is established and Chief Hennessy had had done that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple more questions on this NFPA 1710. I'm assuming that, you know, the the guidelines there, the 28 personnel in an eight minutes, 90% of the time. That that's based on density or number of units, like there's got to be some order of magnitude how they determine these numbers, right? You know how it is.
Yes, so it it goes back and it's going to sound like the traffic kind of report. They pick a a style of building. And and that was like the garden apartments is a style of building that closely matches to what's being proposed here. So there's going to be some disadvantages with the the garden apartments and some advantages. The sprinkler systems, everything that's been proposed. So that's the closest match. And that's why, again, I say, really have to look at and do a hazard assessment just on on that building. And say, what are the tasks we need to be accomplished? How many people do we need to do that? And then you come up with that number. So those are, those are general guidelines. You know, I I actually think 28, if you had a significant incident, would be a little short. You'd come up a little short.
So would it be fair to assume that a smaller building, smaller scale building would require less staff? In terms of response and maybe a different amount of time in terms of response?
So that's how I would look at it. So that's how I would look at it. I would look at the square feet. We'll get the exposure, we'll get a construction. How's it built? And then come up with a, with a number for that.
And would height play any role? You know, number of stories as opposed to just sheer number of units in terms of how many staff you would need and the amount of response time?
Um, that's a good question. You know, when we look at size and one of the first things we look at with, with size up is, is we call it area. So not only is it up, but it, it's length. So yes, height, you know, it does pose a challenge, but I would be more concerned with the, the sheer volume of it. Can we compartmentalize it a little better? So you, you heard the consultant talk about that and compartmentalization is good. We break it into smaller buildings. That's better. So your Canyon Parish is two buildings, right? So that's a less of a challenge. So can we break this into smaller buildings? That's always better. So again, it this way or that way, it's, it's area.
Okay, thank you.
You touched on the number of full-time staff that adjacent neighboring towns have on their fire departments. Fifteen in one, twenty three in another, et cetera. For the record, how many does New Canaan have?
Uh, six, I believe, six on plus it's supplemented with volunteers.
Of course. Yeah. Thank you.
Everybody good? Thank you, Mr. King. Engineer Coplet, did you have anything for us? Okay, do we, do we have any questions for Engineer Coplet?
I do.
Okay. Would you mind terribly stepping to the podium since everyone else has done it? I know I'm making you do it different this time. I apologize. Thank you.
Maria Coplet, Town Engineer.
All right. So a couple of things that you mentioned, I'm just reading off some of your nine fifteen twenty two comments in the report. The increase in stormwater runoff volume though stated for POC, meaning Point of Concern A B is calculated to be a fifty percent increase in volume in the twenty five year storm event. The increases is in volume for the five, ten year and twenty five year storm events are to be further attended. So it's, so it's not to impact downstream areas that may have stormwater peaks and it goes on. So is that something which you think should be? The commission decides this way, a necessary condition upon the applicant?
Well, as it meets our drainage policy, correct? Because our requirements are for water quality that each of our discharge points, excuse me, discharge points would have to show an equal to or reduction from existing conditions. And then peak rate of flow to be equal to or less than existing conditions. And currently, right now, there are certain discharge points which are not able to meet the water quality volume requirements.
Okay. So I think this might be related to that point. Applicant states that the runoff from areas A, B, and C are not quote easily catchable and routable to water quality devices. And then you state that, that DPW is amenable to the use of proprietary treatment practices. But the summary statement is water quality measures must be provided for the increases in areas A, B, and C as they flow to separate discharge points. So i- if you're looking at, you know, the latest iteration of this project overall, what are your feelings overall in terms of the level of stormwater infiltration on site? The, the adequacy of the discharge points, the potential for non-pollutant loads, as was alluded to, I think Engineer Trinkus and the impact potentially on Five Mile River or the Long Island Sound eventually. Can you kind of try to summarize where we're at?
Right. Well, so as I think has been discussed tonight, we are moving in the right direction. Each iteration, we're getting to a better project. We still have room for improvement and we still have got measures to meet for stormwater management and that is outlined in my memo and just in high level. Really where we're talking about is being able to provide more water quality on site. Clarify some of our deep pole testing to verify locations where there were borings done for structural reasons and those results are used towards deep pole tests, but aren't necessarily always an equal because the methodology used to do borings can impact your, your actual soil strata. So traditionally you actually do something referred to as deep pole testing, which is not done with the same equipment. So measures like that, just to verify that the infiltration opportunities that are shown on site would still be able to suffice during post-construction conditions. One of the issues that was raised in this most recent iteration was the capacity of our existing storm sewer system in Weed Street and the applicant has said that during the twenty five year storm event, it does not have sufficient capacity and it causes gutter flow. They're also looking for a direct connection to that catch basin that's at the intersection of Weed and Elm. And what our response was based on their evaluation that they used based on proposed design plans, historic proposed design plans we were able to share. Not as belts, which we conditioned they were not as well because we don't have as belts of the storm sewer system in Weed Street. That if that is the actual case and if that is verified based on their survey work, then we would not permit a storm connection permit. Traditionally, if we ever have issues where we do, we are at full capacity or there is indication of flooding, we would not permit a storm connection permit. Our actual storm connection permit has the caveat that if there ultimately is capacity questions in our system, we can revoke such connection permit. So in this instance, the way that it's presented, we've suggested that the applicant verify with their survey team that we have historic plans that we were able to provide to them. Again, because they're historic and they're dated and design plans and not as built, that they be verified and that they review their numbers because at this point in time, we wouldn't be able to permit that connection. So what that means is that's their overflow connection. So they would have to address their overflow on site. And they could have means to do that, but it would be separate from the current design.
Okay. Can you specify what those means are or is that a further discussion at a later point?
Well, I mean, there are certain options such as pumps or, or level spreaders that would allow the overflow to maintain on their site. The question is whether or not they have enough room, but that would be based on their engineer to do that analysis.
Okay, just a, a little bit of context if you indulge me. So a stormwater management report by Tegan Bond, it could be mispronouncing that shows that over two miles of the Five Mile River Basin of New Canaan is impaired. What does impaired mean? Means it's not meeting minimum drinking quality standards. Then they discuss in this report, the potential source of this pollution is given as industrial point source discharge. Municipal discharges, landfills, remediation sites, groundwater contamination. So we have two miles of the Five Mile River in New Canaan that's impaired, doesn't meet drinking quality standards and that's what they are conjecturing is the, is the source of that pollution.
So, so impaired does not necessarily only refer to drinking water. Our drinking water system is actually upstream of our area in town and our waters go to streams and corridors that ultimately end up in the Long Island Sound. Now you can have impaired water bodies and that's impaired for environmental and ecological systems.
Okay. Is it your opinion that with the existing plan as is that there would be less, no impact or an increased but potential of impact to some of these downwater or downstream sources, like whether it be the Five Mile River or the Long Island Sound, which by Public Act twenty one, twenty nine, we're obligated to take reasonable steps to protect. So what do you think this application, this application designed as is might potentially do to those water sources?
So we're not in the Five Mile River watershed and this would not impact our drinking waters. Ultimately, by the time we get to the Long Island town, I can't make that determination whether or not, you know, ecologically, what those impacts would be. But for water quality, drinking water quality and for the Five Mile River, which we're not in that watershed, those thresholds don't apply.
Okay. When you say we're not in that watershed?
So we have a series of watersheds throughout our town.
Yeah.
And they're determined based on geographic contour, elevation, piping, et cetera. And so the area where this property is located is not within the boundaries of that, which is also known as a watershed. So we're not in the Five Mile River watershed.
But just to, up to that, I think, tell me if this is, you have a different interpretation. One of the things that Tiger Man said in a WPCA meeting was that in the two instances we had in two thousand twenty one, we were around thirty percent above our treatment capacity. That if had Jim Rogers not taken extraordinary measures in those two instances, we likely would have had stormwater discharge or effluent that would have been deposited in the Five Mile River basins, believe what he said.
So that is the treatment plant, but as refers to as to our stormwater connection or downstream stormwater connection, our property or this property is not located.
Understood, but to the extent that we have a potential capacity issue, at least on some very wet days from stormwater and discharge. It will potentially affect not just, it's maybe, we may not have a watershed in this particular site. But that stormwater discharge will ultimately wind up in the Five Mile River Basin after it gets to the treatment facility unless some extraordinary measures are taken, at least in those two instances. So it does affect other parts of New Canaan.
I understand what you're saying, but the stormwater runoff from this property is not the contributing factor to the increase in flow at the treatment plant. Those, because it would be as part of this project, it is to be addressed and basically as much as possible put back into the ground, mitigated for its timing, it's for, for its runoff. The concern that we've talked about in the past is really the inflow into our system. And that's just that items have occurred over time. And so that's why we're waiting for the inflow and infiltration analysis to come back to give us those locations throughout town, throughout our infrastructure and that would be our sanitary sewer infrastructure of where we can actually either do relining, repairs, disconnect of illegal connections, permanent disconnections of illegal connections in order to reduce those connected flows. But in this instance, for this property, what they're showing is compared to ex-current existing conditions, and this is what the threshold is compared to current existing conditions, when we can push them over the line and get them to an acceptable stormwater management design that meets our policy. Their stormwater runoff would be equal to or less than existing conditions.
Understood. One last question. So I think Mr. Hollister mentioned there's sixty five percent impervious coverage in the plan. How does that compare to the closest comparable, which probably is Canyon Parish in terms of impervious coverage percentage?
I'd have to come back to you on those numbers. I don't have them. I apologize.
Would you, if you were to guess it, because it seems at the high end, I would think, right?
So based on the amount of impervious area on this property, I would encourage if there's an opportunity to reduce some of the surface parking, because yes, I believe that there's probably a way to reduce impervious area with that parking, but in order to be able to make a comparison to other projects, I don't have those numbers in front of me.
Thank you.
I just have a quick procedural question because it sounds like there are still some unresolved issues as it pertains to the drain.
My memo, what I've tried to do is be consistent with the commenting that the numbering, et cetera, based on the report and on the plans. And based on the September second submission that we, that our department received, any of our comments that had been addressed sufficiently, we're taking off our comment memo. But if we still have six pages comments that we would like resolved or.
So when does that happen? Because we're getting close, I think, to having to close this public hearing.
So that would not be up to me as to determine which would become, of my comments would become conditions. But, you know, I'm amenable to as long as they get addressed. I, I really can't say as to at what point in time.
Because it also sounds like perhaps there may have to be some redesign of the site to accommodate additional stormwater quality measures that you would like to see done. So it.
Well, it's up for the engineer as to whether or not they're going to have to make any modifications. I mean, their water quality measures, there are proprietary options out there that have small footprints. So, you know, perhaps there might not have to be any site modifications that I can't, I can't speak for the engineer. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney Hollister.
While Ms. Coplet is at the podium, we checked the website Thursday, Friday, weekend and this morning. We do not have a copy of any memo from Ms. Coplet. We were looking for it today. So we, we do not have what you just talked about.
So, I mean, Lynn could probably explain a little bit better, but I know I found it under our town responses. And I've, I've actually already forwarded it to the engineer because they asked for a copy of it. And I found it this weekend because I, I did look this weekend.
Mr. DeAndre, do you have it? Okay, so let's, let's do the following. Engineer Coplet kindly tomorrow, first thing, just forward it to Lynn and Lynn will get it on to the applicant. Okay?
Yes.
Okay.
So, but just for the record, Adam Sereni from his office and, you know, Mr. DeAndre, you were on that email. I sent the link that Lynn had uploaded the memo today. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Lana Raphne, do we have Fire Marshal Payne on the Zoom or not?
I don't believe.
There it is.
Have an unexpected family situation.
Right. So he's not on the Zoom? Okay. Attorney Hollister, before I open to the public, did you have anything at this time?
No.
Okay, great. Okay. Going to open to the public first, anyone in the room would like to address the application. As I noted at the beginning of the meeting, if anybody does wish to speak, if you would kindly keep your remarks to any new information that has come out in this application. So would anybody like to address this?
My name is Michael Field. I live at seven twenty nine Weed. I'm on the corner of Weed and Elm, been there twenty years. And I've been able to observe the traffic situation at that intersection for a long time. I don't have databases. I don't have government reports to refer to, but I have eyes and ears and it's been a very bad situation for a long time. And it's my personal view, despite what was said this evening, that I think the addition of the exit on Weed Street is going to make an already bad situation much worse. I say that because traffic coming out of that exit on Weed Street is going to go against the northbound traffic on, on Weed. Most of the time, most of that traffic is going to turn left. Either go down to the Mary Parkway or it's going to go left again, again against traffic and get into town to shop or, or go to the station. I think the notion that residents are going to walk into town to get their groceries is ridiculous. That's a steep hill. If many of the residents are in the senior category, which I am in, I've done some test runs. It's not easy if you, if you've got a load of groceries. So I think that's a false premise. And I think that it's a tough situation. You're trying to deal with safety and you're trying to deal with congestion at that intersection. And I think this new plan is going to cause damage to both. You're going to have a three-way stop. Make a current congestion problem even worse at peak times. And you're going to have more points of potential conflict as people get frustrated and try and get into the mainstream traffic or cross that traffic. So. And you're going to have more points of potential conflict as people get frustrated and try and get into the mainstream traffic or cross that traffic. So uh despite what was said this evening and references to various cars per hour, which I find very questionable. Uh I think that needs to take some further and very close examination before we casually pass by the safety issue and congestion issue. Second point I'd like to make is that as far as I can tell, the the amount of parking on the site is barely adequate for the residents. Um where I live on corner of Weed Elm, people often use the grass outside my property to park their cars. Um or repair vehicles if they can't get in people's driveways. So I'm curious to know what's going to happen when people have guests, where they're going to park. Uh are they going to try and park on Weed Elm? Uh are we really going to enforce uh parking restrictions on Weed Elm? Because again, that will create a greater safety and congestion problem. Uh I don't, I hear arguments about let's reduce the parking on the site to improve an onsite problem. But it's going to make other problems greater if you do that. So there's a, there's a difficult balance there. I don't see how they're going to achieve it. Example, the safety issues I'm mentioning on the street. The plan improves the onsite safety, but it damages the offsite safety. It da- it damages the public highway safety in my view. So that was my second point. Third point is really quite more personal. I'm living across the street from this uh airport terminal-sized building. It's got um, we talk about the lights to highlight the pathways, but I'm more concerned about five stories of four or five stories, whatever it is, of lights beaming down on me every day and every night. And my neighbors who are east of the property have got even bigger problem. And it seems like the the barriers are going to be put in place, trees are going to be totally inadequate. But all they'll do is hide the hide the parking lot underneath. So I have four stories of lights uh bearing down on us every day, every night. And I think uh that is not something the applicant would want for himself. And I'm very sorry that he feels like his previous neighbors in New Canaan should endure that kind of living condition when it's totally unnecessary just to get thirty more affordable housing units. It seemed like a very poor, one-sided deal to me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to address this application in the room? Okay, Lynn, can we check Zoom land, please? Your attorney Green. Okay, attorney Green, as as I mentioned, kindly try to keep um your remarks to new information, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh once again, for the record, my name is Joel Green. I practice law in Bridgeport with the law offices of Green and Gross. And I appear before you this evening on behalf of Save New Canaan Inc. Um which was formed in response uh to this project and and other projects in town and to sort of bring some common sense in order to some of the development that is confronting or potential development that's confronting New Canaan at the present time. Um I I guess my first question um for you, Mr. Chairman, is what is the I apparently the public hearing is going to be held open. Is that the case?
Um I'm going to ask attorney Hollister what his preference is. I'm also going to ask the commissioners what their preference is. Um we we do have the ability. We have a meeting on September twenty-seventh, Lynn. Right, so we do have the ability to continue the hearing until the twenty-seventh, but attorney Hollister, I'll I'll ask you now what your thinking was.
Uh Mr. Chairman, I was leaning toward closing tonight if we could, but having just learned that Ms. Coplet has issued a memo which we haven't seen. I don't think it would be possible for us to con- uh go along with uh um closing tonight. We we will read it in the morning and if we can get a prompt written response on file, we probably can close pretty promptly on the twenty-seventh. But I think we need a chance to review that.
Okay, understood. Attorney Green, there's your answer, sir.
And and the reason I ask that is for that very reason and that's um I do see the report uh online, but I did not see it in the original location or in the location uh where um in the site. So um I have Mr. Trinkus here this evening and he is prepared to address uh various components of sort of the stormwater um aspects of the project and I'm happy to present him tonight. Or uh you know, his, I don't know the degree to which his presentation may change based on what's in the memo or not. So.
Oh then, then then I would recommend we delay his remarks if 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 Mr. Trinkus is going to read the memo and has additional things to say, we need to delay what he has to say.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that we can potentially shorten um our presentation after we see that memo because much of it may have already been covered. Um and on that basis, I would propose to defer.
Attorney attorney Hollister, he's shaking his head, but I I if I need to keep it open for you, I need to keep it open for the public.
Okay, we need to keep it open with, we can keep it open, but I I I alerted the town planner. I don't know if she passed along my email to you, but my good friend, Mr. Green, uh has been known on occasion to start his opposition on the last night of the hearing when the information cannot be reviewed or rebutted. I'm not going to let that happen this time. So if there's going to be final responses, we would like them in writing by the end of the day on Friday this week, so we know what's coming.
Okay.
And I, we will commit to that obviously ourselves.
Okay, attorney Green, is that satisfactory?
Um it it is and I'm I'm heartened by Mr. Hollister's comments that we're good friends, but uh he's been submitting a lot of materials the last couple of days and I would, I would take that with a grain of salt as well, but.
To be, to be, to be clear, so I have the commitment of both attorney Hollister and attorney Green to submit uh final memos by this Friday.
Can I, can I just make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman, just briefly? I think it's fair of the applicant to, as with the application process, it's fair to have the applicant submit its comments. And maybe that can be done by the close of business on Thursday. Um and then we will scramble to get ours done for the close of business on Friday. Or first thing Monday morning, I don't know, you know, what the chair thinks is fair.
Well, let's just do it. Let's just do it on Friday. Everybody, everybody can read it, everybody can.
Yeah, I know we're we're into dueling lawyers, which I don't like. Um so let's just get everything done by Friday, I'm sure. You look, at the end of the day, it's up to the commission to have all the information. Um and so let's let's just aim for that objective, please.
Fair enough, and with the understanding that there'll be no more submissions after Friday. Is that correct?
Correct.
Uh we all agree.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, uh Mr. Green, just hold on a quick second. The planner.
Understood.
I'm sorry.
One o'clock Friday, is that in a, can we meet that deadline?
Yes.
Attorney Green.
Mr. Trinkus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Right. Okay, attorney Green, you're all set then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll see you next week.
You're welcome. Um. Yes.
The memo from D P W was posted on the website on um Friday. Find it.
It's it's there.
Bring it up so that, because I think that everyone's looking in the wrong place. You look at our website.
Where is it?
We posted all the departmental comments. Town departments and it's the last one that's the most recent. Um there's a lot of material on this applicant's application and that probably will apply was missed.
Okay, well, what I'll suggest is both to the applicant as well as attorney Green, at first thing in the morning, you can't find the memo, kindly let the planner know. And the planner will email you a copy of the memo. Okay, sound good? Okay, so we're all set. Okay, this hearing's uh continued to our September twenty-seventh meeting. Thank you very much.